Welcome to the Wednesday, November seventeenth, two thousand and twenty-one meeting of the Long Meadows School Committee. Just a reminder that all votes while participating remotely must be made by roll call vote. We will begin with the Pledge of Allegiance. The Pledge of Allegiance implies of the United States of America, the Constitution of the Republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Alright, um, I know that Nicole is going to be here, but I think that she's running just a little bit late. So I will take the correspondence, uh, if that's okay with everybody. So we had an email from Ms. Sarah Becker of Massachusetts Public Interest Research Group, MASPR, regarding a virtual forum they held on November ninth. We had emails from the following individuals regarding the face mask policy. Bernadette Don Urban on November tenth, two emails. Warren Brady on November tenth. Mary Beth Chronic on November tenth. Uh, Jessica Kelly, Caitlin Arnold, and Katie Hastings on November thirteenth. Next up is approval of the minutes. We have a possible motion.
I move that the school committee approve the minutes for the November ninth, two thousand and twenty-one school committee meeting as presented.
We have a second?
A second.
Any discussion? I will move to a vote. Gianna?
Yes.
Mary?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
Suzie?
Yes.
And yes for me. Alright, we will move to visitor comments. And just a couple of notes before we let our visitors jump in. First, um, when we recognize you, please say your name and your address. Um, also, just a reminder that you have one opportunity to speak in visitor comments and that you have a three-minute time limit. Um, I want to thank everybody in advance for, uh, continuing to be respectful and, uh, speak to the issue. Um, we've always done that and we thank everybody in advance. And again, just a note, um, sometimes there's more that you want to say or other things that you want to add. And again, we always encourage people to send us an email. We read all of those emails and we, you know, really value hearing from all of you in the visitor comments and by email. So with that, um, again, I encourage folks to either, uh, raise their hand using the raise hand function or to turn your camera on and raise your hand and I will be happy to recognize you. So Jessica, you are first up. Please start with your name and your address.
Hi, um, my name's Jessica Kelly and my address is thirty-seven South Avenue, Long Meadow. Um, so I wanted to speak on the pre-K mask mandate. Um, so this committee mandated masks for the pre-K and cited Desi's strong recommendation, um, that children under five should be masked at school as a factor in their mandate. Um, Desi recommended masking. They didn't recommend mandating masks. And they specifically said that ma- uh, mandated or masking children under five should be at the family's discretion. I believe that the only appropriate action by this committee in regards to pre-K masking would be to help disseminate information to parents and then let them make the decision that is best for their child. Um, so instead you created a situation, um, with your mandate where parents like me needed to obtain a doctor's note for their child to be unmasked during speech therapy sessions. So you're, as a school committee, putting a literal barrier in the way of my son's access to his IEP services and his access to a free and appropriate public education. And then you effectively stepped out of the conversation until about a week ago. So this mandate that, um, is on the pre-K, that you put it on the pre-K as well as Desi's mandate are predicated on falsehoods that are designed to redefine what it means to create a safe learning environment. And treating every child as sick until proven healthy made sense in early two thousand and twenty because we didn't know anything about COVID. And we were so scared of it that we literally stayed home. And, um, we didn't know how it affected our kids, but that's no longer the case. And thank God, we know that kids are incredibly unlikely to be seriously ill from COVID. Um, and that means that sick until proven healthy now in late two thousand and twenty-one is oppressive and tyrannical. So Marty, you acknowledged in our meeting on Monday that you did research and you learned that there's no significant difference in COVID case numbers between schools with mandates and schools without mask mandates. Um, so that's something I told you guys in August and I'm glad that you finally figured it, like, confirmed it, obviously. I just wish you would have done that before you enacted a mandate. Um, you sent out a survey to the preschool parents asking about, for feedback on how they feel about lifting the preschool mask mandate. Um, and I know that's going to factor into your decision to keep it or lift it because you've expressed concern that parents might pull their kids out if they're uncomfortable with the mandate being lifted. Um, I'd like to remind you that a parent who wishes to keep their child masked is free to do that regardless of the actions of this committee. I also, um, wanted to say that no matter what the results are, um, maybe parents tell you that they don't want it lifted. But everybody here knows that if a parent truly felt that a mask was the difference between life and death for their child, they would never send them to school in the first place. Um, further, I'd like to point out that I, I understand a decision to mask your child whether or without a mandate. Um, but if a parent or this committee is asserting that a masked child is endangered.
Jessica, we're, we're losing you and you're at three minutes.
Isn't ma-
Thank you, Jessica.
Hold on, hold on, hold on. Wait, what did you say?
Uh, we, we lost the last part of what you said and you are at three minutes. That's what I said.
Okay.
But I, I assure you, we definitely got the gist of what you were saying. So thank you for your comment. Um, next up is Dawn Nay.
Can you hear me?
We can.
Because I don't know how to turn on the camera.
We can hear you.
Okay, my name is Dawn Nay. I live at ninety-seven Maple Road. I have two of my own daughters as well as two of my nieces who go to preschool. We also have close family members who have pre-existing conditions. So we've taken the mask mandate and masking our children extremely serious. The recommendation of the CDC and the American of Pediatrics at this time continues to you recommends kids have masks over the age of two. Masks can be a great tool to help reduce the spread of COVID as well as of other viruses such as the flu. Um, the more staff and students wearing masks correctly will help even those who cannot wear masks due to various considerations. It unfortunately only works if everyone can agree to do things we need to be in order to protect those with weakened immune systems, students and family members. We are far from out of the woods in this pandemic, vaccines or not. And we only prolong the entire process by letting up safety measures too soon. This is especially true for the youngest students. Some places have, have dropped some of their prevention and strategies and have faced school closures and even returns to virtual learning. Universal masking is a key strategy to keeping our children in school and learning. There's really no need to be removing the layers of protection when it comes to our youngest members of the community. The CDC has also shown inconsistent mask usage has correlated with school-based outbreaks from ages five to eleven years old. Um, not just being allowed, I'm sorry, I lost my track. I'm so fluttered. But I oppose taking the mask mandate away. I agree with some of the things that other mother just said in regards to her child and speech therapy. Um, I believe that it's okay for the kids to take their masks off and do stuff with the speech therapist. But I know in our pod, if the children in preschool are not going to be wearing masks, even if our children would be masked, we wouldn't be comfortable sending any of them to school without masks. That's all I have to say.
Thank you, Dawn.
Thank you.
Would anyone else like to make a comment?
Yes, I would. Uh, this is Margaret Rockus at sixty-seven Shady Side Drive.
Go ahead, Margaret.
Um, well, I have a child who's a senior and of course I'm not going to disclose their name because I'd get a huge eye roll or how could you do this, mother? But, um, you know, mask cases just nearly doubled today. There's going to be traveling over Thanksgiving and Christmas, um, the winter holidays. And I know we're all really tired of COVID and we would all like to get back to normalcy. Um, I am not a fan of dropping the mask mandate before Janu- the first day in January that they go back to school. I know it's five weeks. I know they've been through a lot. Um, I mean, of course I will send my child because my child's a senior and second quarter grades are really important. So I don't have a choice. Um, my child is going to have to wear a KN ninety-five um, because we are planning to visit relatives um, that we could not visit last year. And I think everybody deserves the holidays that they didn't have last year. We didn't go see relatives. Um, all, everyone's vaccinated. Everyone who's eligible for a booster has boosters. But we have an infant in the family we'll be seeing. We have a ninety-three-year-old. We have a seventy-four-year-old with, um, a pacemaker. So I'm looking at the calendar going, okay, I guess I'm going to have to test my child if there's no mask mandate in the high school. I'm going to have to test them the first four days we're staying with people. And that makes me, I, I, I just don't understand, um, why we can't wait until early January, the first Monday in January because we're done traveling. Be happy to take my chances then. I know we have to drop the masks at some point. Um, I think that would be a better time. What would make me feel better? Um, I would like to see if we go that route of saying no masks if you're vaccinated. I'd like to see the school district, the high school adopt a voluntary but highly recommended, um, pool testing program for all four grades. I think that would give a lot of, um, ma- make people who are against dropping the mask mandate feel better about that. Um, I would like to know, I'm going to stay on this, uh, Zoom. I'd like to know how students who haven't been vaccinated are going to be differentiated from those who have been. I hope that's not a teacher thing. I hope the teachers aren't the enforcers. Um, I'd like to see what the, uh, high school plans in terms of gym classes. Um, and I would also like the high school to consider for those people who are concerned and are traveling and don't want to expose vulnerable people in their family. I would like to see the school give students the ability, the last week of classes in December, to, not to have remote instruction, but to take their exams at home, to turn in papers that are due or projects that are due via email or photograph or drop them off at the school, um, or call them snow days. But give us some room so that the kids can be home if that's what the parents want. Um, I have a very conservative household. We don't go to restaurants. My child does not go to large park.
Margaret, you're at three minutes.
Alright, thank you very much.
Thank you, Margaret. Other comments? Anna?
Hi, um, can you hear me?
We can. Can you give us your name and your address, please?
Sure, my name is Anna Bykis. I'm on seven Hanover Lane. And, um, I just have some questions about what, um, if any of the staff in any of our schools, if they are talking, um, about to the teachers and, um, and other staff members of maybe not asking, um, kids if they're vaccinated yet with COVID because I know it has happened in some of our schools already. And I just don't feel that that is appropriate question to ask, especially, um, especially young children. Um, I see a huge divide between adults already and basically the difference between the vaccinated, uh, population and unvaccinated. Um, I'm hearing it already between the two other people who just made comments about the preschool and about, um, the other woman, which she has a chi- um, a child that is a senior in high school. Um, it's very divisive and, um, a lot of segregation is going to happen to those kids and people that are not ready for their kids to be vaccinated. So I just want to know what, um, our leaders are doing to educate our staff on not asking inappropriate questions, especially to young children. Because, um, I, I just don't like the feeling that if someone is vaccinated, that they are better than other people. Uh, if adults feel this way, I'm sure little kids who are, you know, very young will also feel that way. And that just goes for also the whole, um, eighty percent of schools being vaccinated. I do not agree with that at all. Even if I had children that were vaccinated of that age group, I would not approve of that whatsoever. That is just un- unreal to me that people would actually, um, go for that. Um, that is definitely teaching our children a very, very, uh, segregation and divisive and you're just better than and who is who. I mean, this is just all private information. So I would just like to know, um, if there's any talk to any staff members about that. Thank you.
You're welcome. And, and I'm sure the superintendent will address that when we get later on in the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
Other comments? Uh, Katie, go ahead.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
We can.
Okay, great. Thank you. Um, I just first like to start by saying that the fear that has been instilled in so many people is actually fearful to me. Um, people feel that masks are the saving grace for everything. They think that if their child is masked, they are safe to go around an immunocompromised relative or friend. And that is just not the case. The mask is not saving you from COVID. There are so many studies out there proving that these masks are doing minimal to prevent COVID. If worn correctly, please tell me a student in school who is wearing a mask one hundred percent correctly all day, changing it every thirty minutes. I'll be lucky if my kids wear a different mask once a week. I mean, the, the fear in me is if I had a child or a, a family member who was immunocompromised, I would never want to, to have them safe around my child who was improperly wearing a mask or wearing a mask and in general. The, the whole, whatever, I'm not even going to go into the mask situation. The masks are absolutely ridiculous. But to be honest with you, I am sick of the fear. We need to move on with our lives. It is time to stand up and show these kids that life can get back to normal. They are not at risk for COVID or dying of COVID. They are more at risk of driving to school and dying in a car crash or drowning in a swimming pool than they are of COVID. So this nonsense has to stop. I cannot even stand it any longer. Also, this eighty percent vaccination rate in schools to determine whether or not you can remove your mask is also ridiculous. It's like a carrot being dangled in front of your face. It's like, let's just say there's, oh, so there's eighty percent of the high school that's vaccinated, so twenty percent is not. So you're sitting in a class or a room of a hundred people, twenty of them are not vaccinated. How are those twenty people going to feel, to feel, how are they going to feel when they're sitting in that room and they are the only ones that have to keep a mask on? It is insanity. It is coercion and that is not the way that we work this country. I feel very frustrated at, this is discrimination, this is segregation, and I will not allow this to be from, to stand for my child. If everyone has a mask, fine. If everyone doesn't have a mask, fine. And at some point, these masks need to go, but we cannot segregate or discriminate against who's vaccinated and who is not. It is appalling and it is disgusting and I hope that every single person on this board will never allow that to happen in long middle schools. Thank you.
Thank you, Katie. Other comments? I am seeing no other visitor comments. I see Susan.
Not letting me hear you.
There you go, Susan. We can hear you. Uh, can you start with your name and your address, please?
Susan Lautzer, one forty-eight Hazardville Road. Um, cases are heading up in Massachusetts right now. We still have Thanksgiving and holidays to get through. I worry about students who aren't vaccinated choosing to unmask. And I'm mainly talking about the high school and the eighty percent and going for the unmasking in the high school. I worry about vaccinated students still becoming ill and perhaps being asymptomatic and passing it on. Masks are not the only protection. They're one layer of the protections, but including but not limited to air filtration, distancing, and vaccinations. But the more layers we have, the more protection we have. My wearing a mask protects you. Your wearing a mask protects me. Kids may be less likely to get seriously ill, but vaccinated or not, they can still catch it and they can still be contagious for others. Parents are still free to have their own children masked, but they're doing the most benefit for the children around them. I'm hoping that we can continue to protect the children who are choosing to mask from those that might choose not to mask. I do have a question and, and I'm curious. Have we asked the parents of the high school students if they would like to continue masking? Or have we only asked them if other, other ways of saying that, like, if, if we're, um, what our reaction would be if we were to unmask? And I'm curious as to whether we would have a high percentage of the parents who would be like game for continuing to, um, mask to keep everybody as safe as we can for as long as we can. Thank you.
Thank you, Susan. I know the superintendent will address what we asked in the surveys when we go later on in the meeting. So thank you. Uh, do we have other visitor comments? I am seeing none. Uh, so we are going to move on. So next up are school committee announcements and recognitions. Do we have any announcements or recognitions? Gianna, go ahead.
I know we've spoken a lot about the, um, you know, the, the musical achievements and the academic and the athletic, especially the athletic achievements these past couple of weeks of the school committee, um, recognitions. And I just happened to be at the girls' cross-country, uh, banquet celebration tonight before coming here. And although they are still continuing on into states and their athletic achievements are amazing, I wanted to recognize, um, the parents, the guardians, the coaches, um, but especially the girls for their camaraderie, uh, their character, their sense of inclusivity. And, um, you know, they're just, their resilience and their encouragement and support of each other. Um, so again, athletic successes aside, it was a beautiful celebration of just they're wanting to help each other, encourage each other, and celebrate each other. And I just appreciate that.
Thank you, Gianna. Uh, I'm sure we all agree with that. Other school committee announcements or recognition? Um, I'm just going to throw one thing in here, not save it for my report, which is, um, I think we're all in spirit at Chickaby Comp right now. Uh, rooting on our boys soccer team in their semifinal match against Westside. Um, I'm hoping that maybe the superintendent will flash updates for us as he gets updates from the field. Um, but yeah, I know we're all there in spirit and we wish, uh, the best for, for our boys and hoping they can make it to the finals, which would be super exciting. Uh, any other recognitions or announcements? Alright, we will continue on. We do not have business with guests. Uh, administrative reports, the superintendent told me that he does not have a report and that we will hear from him enough later on in the meeting. Uh, so that brings me to my report, um, which will be brief, uh, which is, I want to thank everybody who attended the, the middle school forum, uh, that Marty did on Monday. Um, it was, uh, I, I think it was, it was a really wonderful opportunity for folks to engage in that discussion, which is a hugely important discussion for our community. Um, and I want to thank Marty for doing two of those forums. And if folks are interested, it's available online. And, and I think Marty said he's going to send out another announcement with just a reminder. Um, if you have the original email, you can just go to that link and it's there. But I think there's some really important information, uh, that people should have as we think about the future of our middle schools. The other thing that, that I would say, which I always say, is thank you to everybody who has gotten vaccinated um, and encourage folks to continue to get vaccinated, get booster shots. Again, the more vaccinated we are, uh, the more flexibility we have on things that we can do, um, to make things look more like normal. Um, and then the final thing that, that I'll say, um, as always, I really appreciate people coming to this meeting, sharing their opinions, doing it in a respectful way. And just to recognize that when we have difficult issues, we're not all going to agree. Um, it's just, we're not. Um, but I think we can have a discussion in a respectful way um, and, and try to do the best that we can. And if we disagree, that's okay. We can continue to work as a community, uh, to move things in the right direction. So thank you to everybody for, for making that possible. Alright, um, Dagan is not here, so we don't have a student rep report. Uh, other reports, I know there was just an LPVEC meeting. So I think Bronwyn and Mary have an update. So I think it looks like Mary's going to take that. So Mary, go ahead.
Hot off the presses, I ran across the hallway for this meeting. Um, at the LPVEC meeting, we had our annual audit presentation by Powers and Sullivan LCC. Um, and they provide a fair opinion on the financial statements of the collaborative. Um, the, the overarching results, um, they have an unmodified audit opinion, which they believe that everything looks good and is accurate. Um, and they found no instances of non-compliance. Um, they reviewed all of the grants, um, and went into detail with, um, that audit for us. Also, Roland Joyal provided an update, um, focusing on last year. And, um, one of the highlights is that he's very proud of the time that our students, um, at LPVEC spent in school, even when some of the collaborating districts, um, were remote. Uh, they were still holding in-person sessions. Um, it was a positive but quick meeting, um, because this meeting was starting. So, um, thank you. Does anybody have any questions? Uh, one more piece of good news is that numbers of for enrollment are up this year.
Thank you, Mary, and, and thank you to you and Bronwyn for, um, for representing us with the LPVEC. That's a super important role and thank you both for doing that. Um, next up, energy and sustainability. I don't have a report. We have not met since our last meeting. Uh, Gianna, SEAL?
Thank you, Kevin. So SEAL Special Education Alliance of Long Meadow continues to, um, offer and open their, you know, resources and, and leaders and, and members to, uh, continuing to try and spread the word about, um, their networking and their, you, you know, again, it's not just issues of students with, uh, special, uh, needs or, or special, um, abilities. It's about creating, you know, attention and awareness of, of different kinds of diverse, uh, learning and a different and different kinds of populations. Uh, I'm happy to report that SEAL had a meeting last Wednesday. Um, participation in the, there's still virtual meetings, participation in the virtual meetings continues to grow. With SEAL's new website, sealma.org, they're seeing an increasing number of hits to the website. People are starting to use the interactive, um, tool on the website to ask questions, um, which the leaders, uh, have been trying to, to return answers, um, as quickly as possible. And last week also at the meeting, we were able to have conversations and ask questions of the new elementary assistant principals slash, uh, special education coordinators in those buildings. So, uh, the parents and guardians on the call had, uh, excellent, you know, valuable, uh, questions and insight for the, uh, assistant principals. And I see Jean Fontaine is on here. Jean, did you want to add anything?
No, I just want, um, just thank you to Diane and Megan for heading that up and all the hard work that they do for that. And I agree that the parent participation has been growing, and I think some of that is because it's easier for parents to access that virtually. So, no, I thank them for their support and look forward to the next meeting, which is the second Wednesday of December. And we'll be having a speaker on anxiety, so Megan Tucker, one of the social workers from, she's the social worker at Williams Middle School, will be speaking on anxiety for parents around how to get reso- resources for families and for students and kind of a question and answer session. So that's what's up on the next month's meeting. Thank you.
And Jean, thank you for your leadership too, and, and your guidance and, and your support um, of not just that, you know, not just of the SEAL organization, but of our, our students in general. So thank you.
Thank you, Gianna. Thank you, Jean. Uh, the tax ceiling task force. Uh, I don't think there's an update because I don't think there's been a meeting since our last meeting, correct? Okay, thank you, Jamie. All right. Uh, there are no subcommittee reports, so we are to ongoing business. First one up is school committee assignments, and so we have a vacancy on the curriculum subcommittee. I think Marty is gonna speak to that one.
Thank you. Uh, not much to report unless there's someone this evening that, um, has thought about it, or if you have any additional questions about the curriculum sub, happy to answer those, but, uh, we still have the vacancy, and if anybody uh, has the time available, it's a busy year for sure for this committee on a number of fronts, but if anybody needs any info on that curriculum subcommittee and what we're engaged in and what the requirements might be, Sue or I would be happy to answer. So.
Yeah, and, uh, Gianna, go ahead.
All right, thanks, Kevin. I was just gonna say unless somebody else is, you know, burning to, to, to be on it, I'm happy to go back to curriculum sub.
Thank you, Gianna. I think we all really appreciate that, and, and what I would say is, uh, if it turns out to be uh, too difficult or, you know, a challenge for you to do it, I, I'm happy to, to do that as well. So I'm, I'm hoping between the two of us, we can, we can make it happen. So, um, I think that will enable us to have three people there, which I think is important. Um, does that sound like a deal?
Yeah, I'm thinking you are doing a great job running, being the chair, that, uh, let me, let me take a crack at it.
Thank you, Gianna. I appreciate that, and we all appreciate that. We know, uh, that you'll be a good addition to that subcommittee, so thank you. All right, I think we got that one all set. Um, uh, Marty, uh, we're gonna talk about the mask policy. I'm gonna turn it over to you.
Thank you so much. I'll just do a quick screen share here, get us going. Right. I thought, uh, it might be helpful to put a set of wider context for the discussion tonight and, uh, sort of uh, place it, uh, place the discussion tonight along that continuum that we have thought about for really the last eighteen months, and I think, uh, this committee has made a commitment to, uh, lead and direct on along this continuum. And so we have sort of regularly, I would say, um, probably at every meeting almost for the last eighteen months or so, uh, sort of inspected, reviewed our COVID mitigation strategies, and there have been times when we have had to be more restrictive, and then there are times when we have been able to safely be less restrictive, and I think kind of, um, thinking about our work along that continuum, I hope is a, is a helpful concept. I think we all want to get to the, the green side of this continuum, and I know this is a, this has been a challenging issue and no doubt a divisive one, but I think what we all agree is that we are headed towards the green side of this continuum. We are, we all want to get there, uh, and I believe we will get there. And so I think that, you know, for me is sort of a unifying concept in that, you know, we, we all recognize that, um, we look forward to a day where uh, we are uninhibited by, uh, COVID and that we can be less restrictive in the, in, in our approaches to, um, to COVID. And so, uh, tonight, I think is another opportunity for us to review and inspect our procedures and think about whether or not it makes sense for this community to, uh, be less restrictive, and specifically tonight, we're talking about uh, our, our masking policy, and we'll also chat a little bit about lunch at the high school. Uh, but, you know, again, it has been part of our regular commitment to, to safely move to the green side of this continuum whenever we, we safely can, and I think back to, it seems like a short time ago that we had a lot of sort of restrictive practices in place, necessary practices, but things that we now realize are outmoded or, or not needed because of transmission rates or public health information or what have you. I, I think back to last year when we, uh, where, when we had plexiglass, uh, in classrooms and in offices, and I think back to last year when we had, um, more restrictive distancing standards and more restrictive quarantining standards. And so thankfully, we've been able to be less restrictive, we've been able to, to safely be less restrictive uh, on a lot of those measures. And so tonight is, is another opportunity to, to think along this continuum and think whether or not we can uh, agree to be less restrictive. But I, I guess I would say to anyone watching is that uh, we are all committed to getting over to the right side of this continuum, and, and we will get there. We have been slowly marching there, and, uh, we, we've slowly been able to, um, you know, work our way through this pandemic, and we've done it. I, I appreciate that as a community, we've done it with great, uh, civility, we've done it with great input from the community, and we've done it with great leadership from, from the school committee. So, uh, so as I said, tonight, uh, we have a few things to review in terms of the COVID mitigation strategies and practices and policies. Uh, high school masking, uh, preschool masking and, uh, lunch at the high school. So I want to start, uh, just with some, some broad, um, uh, health data that, uh, um, was supplied to us, uh, in some cases by health officials on the town side and also from available data on MassDPH website. This is a, that's sort of a regional look, the Hampton County fourteen-day average, uh, elegant, average daily incident rate for a hundred thousand. You'll start to see that it's, uh, there is a tail starting to kind of move upwards, and I think that's something that we have to be mindful of, but um, you know, generally the, the trend has been downward since, since the beginning of the year, and that's encouraging. When we look at, uh, active cases in Long Meadow, we see, um, you know, a, a trend that you could, you can sort of draw your own conclusions here, but, uh, uh, we've been as high as thirty-eight active cases during this school year, and, uh, now we're somewhere in the, in the mid twenties in terms of number of active cases among residents, uh, in Long Meadow. This is a, uh, a familiar, uh, chart for the school committee. We, we've been looking at this regularly. I appreciate, uh, our school nurses who regularly update, um, the, each day, they update the number of active cases that we have and the number of students that are in quarantine for exposure. We had a little uptick, uh, earlier this month, and, and it has started to, uh, decline in recent days, which is encouraging. Uh, the blue line is the total number of active cases that, that has fallen since I put this chart together. It's fallen below five, so we're, we're, uh, in terms of the number of active cases, it's been quiet uh, over the last week. I think the, perhaps the, uh, the uptick that we saw, at least in the, the exposure category, may be related to the, to the Halloween, uh, weekend. Uh, the committee had asked, uh, I think, uh, I, I hope, you know, the data that you're seeing here is responsive to some of the requests that you'd asked for, the uh, kind of a breakdown in the, the number of, uh, cases in the various, uh, age categories in Long Meadow. Uh, in the zero to four range, the number of, uh, of cases that we have seen in Long Meadow since September one is thirteen, in the five to eleven range, thirty-nine, in the twelve to fifteen range, eighteen, and in the sixteen to nineteen range, uh, it is thirteen. So again, uh, just information to hopefully, uh, set the wide context for your discussions tonight. Uh, the committee had asked, uh, to, for a sort of high-level review of test and stay, and this is from the test and stay dashboard that we have. I think this is a, this is a, uh, slide that I'm really proud of. Uh, we're very fortunate to have a, a robust test and stay program. We're, we're one of the few districts that I'm aware of that, that have testers, uh, in each of our schools all day, and so that's, that's a great advantage to us, and uh, the, the program is, is, has its legs under us, under it, and it's, it's up and running, and you'll see that we've administered four hundred and forty-seven tests through test and stay since it began, I guess it was early October, maybe? And, um, it has yielded four positive tests, but, so the good news is that really that four hundred and forty-three represents four hundred and forty-three, uh, student days, four hundred and forty-three student tests that have allowed student, those students to stay in school and not have to quarantine at home. So it's a very different, um, it's a very different, um, dynamic this year, which is great, and this is, you know, one of the test and stay has been one of the factors that has allowed us to slide over to the green side, the green side of that continuum that we looked at earlier. So to dive into, uh, LHS, uh, masking, and, um, this is information that is, is familiar, I'm sure, uh, to this committee and perhaps to the folks that are on the call tonight, but it's worth reviewing. That, uh, mass, DESI and DPH, and it's, it's notable that uh, DESI and DPH have issued guidance collaboratively this year, so anything that has come out of DESI with regard to COVID guidance and protocols is collaboratively sent to us by MassDPH. So that's, that's been an encouraging thing, a helpful thing, that, that those two state agencies are in fact working together. So we have an opportunity through the DPH DESI program to, uh, if we were to demonstrate that we had a vaccination rate of over eighty percent, then vaccinated individuals would not be subject to the state mask requirement. Caveat to that is it, it, it needs local approval and local adoption, so that's why we're here tonight. Uh, at your last meeting, we presented documentation that over eighty percent of individuals in LHS and Central Office had been, uh, vaccinated, and that's a, that's an aggregate figure based on staff and students combined, anyone that sort of works under this roof. Uh, we received a letter from the Associate Commissioner on Monday confirming that we had met that threshold and basically positioning us for the discussion this evening. So tonight, uh, I'd like to bring forward a, a recommendation for you on this, and, uh, what we, uh, administratively are recommending this evening is that we, uh, pursue this off-ramp, that we remove the mask mandate for vaccinated staff and students at the LHS LPS Central Office Building. Uh, we would still need to require, in alignment with the current state requirement, that unvaccinated students and staff would have to continue wearing masks. The, uh, I think what we've heard from the committee here is that were we to pursue this option, we would want to make sure that we're partnering with families, that we're honoring families' intentions, and we would want to make the option for vaccinated students, um, to unmask only available to those whose students, uh, those students whose parents or caregivers have granted specific permission. And so what we would have essentially would be a list of students who uh, have not been given permission or do not have permission to unmask. And so on that, essentially on that list would be uh, students who, uh, whose families have not granted us the permission, but also students who are unvaccinated. So it would be sort of de-identified in that way. So we sent out a survey, um, I, I think that we, we've heard concerns from community members and from this committee about the, you know, the potential to inadvertently perhaps, uh, identify students' vaccination status based on whether or not they're wearing a mask. And so when we had talked to, uh, Hopkinton, the, the superintendent in Hopkinton had advised us that about uh, forty percent of their students were still, uh, masking, were still optionally choosing to mask, even though, uh, over ninety-five percent of their students were vaccinated. So, uh, interestingly, when we had surveyed, uh, parents and caregivers of LHS students this week, we had gotten back this information. Uh, you'll see in the blue that sixty-nine percent had indicated that they would be comfortable if we were to lift the mandatory mask mandate for vaccinated staff and students. Then the second question was to ask respondents which option or statement best describes uh, their position on this issue. And so I think what's, what's interesting in this particular slide is the, the red slice of the pie, where twenty-seven percent of the respondents, and we had a response, uh, from five hundred and fifty-six parents and caregivers, twenty-seven percent of, uh, the respondents had said that they would not grant their, uh, vaccinated child the opportunity to unmask. And so, uh, you know, twenty-seven percent of that five hundred and fifty-six, um, I think I see Mr. Shay, who's our math wizard, uh, working on that perhaps, but I, I believe, uh, it is, I have the number here. Yeah, so I think it would be about, it would be about, you know, I think at the end of the day, we would potentially have about close to forty percent of our student body would, would probably continue to still opt, would, would probably still be masked. You know, a percentage of those being unvaccinated children, and then a percentage of those would be children who had not been given permission by their parents. So, um, that is really in line with the, the Hopkinton experience, and so that's a, uh, I think an important data point for us as you, as you consider this recommendation and as you, as you make a decision. You know, certainly recognize that this is, um, a really challenging decision, and, you know, respect so many of the opinions that we heard during public comment and the feedback that, um, I've received from individual committee members and from, um, from administrators, and, uh, know that there isn't any sort of, you know, perfect solution here. Uh, but we think that this is, uh, that we, we ought to pursue, uh, this opportunity to allow vaccinated individuals, staff and students, the opportunity to unmask. It's a, it's a fairly complex issue, uh, in the sense that, um, it, it requires some consideration for, there, there's some nuances to it. What we would recommend is that we pursue, uh, and establish a trial period for optional masking, and that it would extend from December one to December twenty-second. And that's an opportunity to sort of gather some feedback, um, watch the health trends, uh, consider the social impacts, look at whether or not this is, creates some managerial problems. In other words, does it, is it, how does it, uh, does it inhibit the smooth operation of Long Meadow High School? It's an incredibly well-run school. We wouldn't want to do anything to, to disrupt that, and I would ask the committee to, uh, consider authorizing us, the, uh, administrators, the opportunity to reinstate that mask mandate at any time if there's a, if there are exigent circumstances, if there's, if, if we're just seeing that, uh, it's, it's not working out for one reason or another. The proposal here tonight would be to say that we would, uh, hold off on extending it into January, that we would look at a potential reinstatement of that, of the masks on January third. Again, depending on our experience with that, uh, uh, with the optional period from December one to December twenty-second. And of course, we would want to be respectful of, of students who choose to mask at any time. And so the, the, the survey and uh, what we've heard from staff and students suggests that there, there will be quite a few students who will suggests that there will be quite a few students who will continue to choose to mask. And I do think it is incredibly important that we, you know, put things in place to make sure that this doesn't become socially challenging and disruptive, that there's, you know, that this is a positive experience for students. I have a lot of faith in our families. I have a lot of faith in our students. I think our our students respect each other's choices nowadays. But we would want to monitor that and and make sure that students weren't experiencing any any negative pressure because of their choice, either their inability to be vaccinated or their their choice to be unvaccinated, or simply their choice to remain masked. I think that that part of this is incredibly important. We we want this to to not inhibit, you know, the the great social emotional climate that exists at Long Meadow High School. Would want to remind everyone that if we were to choose this off ramp, that masks would still have to be required on buses and in the health office. That's that's not a choice for us. Athletically, we would still adhere to MIAA rules. We haven't heard completely what the winter sports guidelines are going to be from the MIA, but we're we're watching that and paying attention to that. Our recommendation tonight would be that choral groups, that if they're actively singing, that they would continue to still mask. They're they're, if they're sort of in instructional mode and they're not singing, they they could unmask optionally if they are vaccinated and have been approved by their parents. And then the other wrinkle that we need to think about is is requirements for school day visitors and for visitors to school-sponsored events. So if we have a game, a concert, we would recommend that visitors to those games and concerts continue to mask. We we want everybody to enjoy those events. And yet, you know, we we wouldn't have any way of really firmly monitoring or enforcing the vaccination status of of visitors to school-sponsored events. And same thing during the school day, we we think it would be sort of an impractical burden to require school staff to, let's say, check for evidence of vaccination from visitors. So there's a few, you know, there are definitely some nuances to this. It's not a simple yes, no, black or white proposition. But we we want to, you know, kind of make sure that we've thought through all the, all of these nuances. So I'll stop there. I'm I'm sure there are some questions and and perhaps there's there's things that we haven't yet thought of, and and perhaps there's some things that we'll we'll need to bring back to you at a future date. But we've spent considerable amount of time thinking this through. I appreciate all the the feedback that we've gotten from the community, from individual committee members, and and the the survey responses were were very, very helpful as well. So I'll stop there and see if you have any questions.
Thank you, Marty. Thanks to to everybody who who helped with all this. And again, as Marty said, that's members of the community and members of the admin team and the high school team. So thank you, everybody who put this forward. So now let's have a discussion. Suzie, you're up.
Yes, thank you. I just had a question about the data, about the school age data. Dr. O'Shea, could you go back to that slide? Uh, yeah, there you go. Um, yeah, because I think in the last meeting, I asked for information about our pre-K in particular. And wanted to know how many, how many students in our pre-K alone had tested positive for COVID. And I don't know if that number means townwide or in our pre-K program.
Thank you. It it may be referenced down below in the slide deck, but we've had just one, one of our preschoolers has tested positive and only one staff member. So it's been a pretty good experience this year for our preschool. One positive student case, one positive adult case in the preschool.
Okay, thank you. So these numbers are townwide, not not from directly from our public schools.
Correct, townwide.
Okay, so the eighty three students or the eighty three juvenile cases do not necessarily represent every single, they're not representative necessarily of learners in our schools.
Correct.
Thank you.
Jamie, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. I I have a question as it relates this to, and Marty, I'm not sure if you know the answer to it as well. Out of these eighty three children, were any of them hospitalized? Did any of them stay out longer than the normal quarantine period? And did any of them create additional transmission in our schools?
I don't have that information, Jamie, whether or not there was, you know, whether it led to hospitalization or or longer quarantine periods.
Okay, I wasn't sure whether you knew or not.
Yeah, I mean, anecdotally, I have not heard that, but I I would want to, I'd want to double check that with town health officials.
Do you know if the last part of it, did did we have any other additional transmissions in the schools from these cases?
There have been cases this year that we could not rule out school-based transmission. In other words, we weren't able to establish that the transmission definitely happened outside of school. So I think for for sure, we have seen instances that were more likely than not a result of school-based transmission. Very, very small number, though.
Thanks, Marty. Nicole, go ahead.
Thank you for putting all of this together, Dr. O'Shea. I'm wondering if you can speak to any information or advice we might have received from any of our public health officials, including our school physician.
So the, we certainly received some advice on the preschool question on the, with regard to the high school. That we had talked to them about that and and really, really relied on the fact that this was a a mass DPH provided off ramp. And so when we talk about the preschool, I certainly can convey the feedback that we received from town health officials and in our consulting position.
Thank you.
Wow, everybody's hands up. I think I saw Gianna's hand was up first. I'm gonna go to Gianna, and then we'll work our way around.
Thank you, Kevin. I am, I'm just wondering if now would be an appropriate time. I know a motion hasn't been made, but I would like to talk about the timing if we were to move forward with going with mask optional. And that, when I say the timing, I I feel like a January third or January fourth, again, if we were to move forward with mask optional, would be a much preferred better date because, you know, some of the, some of the reasons we already heard in terms of, you know, the holidays, you know, maybe getting through a little bit more of the flu season. But for me, it would also be, you know, some families will have to adjust. This would be a, you know, whether it's for personal reasons or, you know, medical reasons or, you know, whatever the case may be, and and I certainly don't want to judge or speculate on any of that because everybody has a valid, to them, it's valid. So I'd like to give people time to adjust. I'd like to give, you know, the administrators and the students, you know, to kind of wrap their heads around this, make plans. But most especially, I think that we would need a lot of time to address the potential for, again, we heard it from a couple of parents. I'm thinking of myself, you know, the potential for, you know, people to be to to feel ostracized or, you know, a stigma if they're wearing a mask or if they're not wearing a mask. I was encouraged that, you know, by the numbers of vaccinated students who would most likely still be wearing a mask, because I think that could be, you know, a good buffer between the students who are not vaccinated and, you know, who are still having to wear a mask. I also want to recognize, I think it's important, the conversations that we have with our children. I have a daughter in high school, just making it very clear that if someone is wearing a mask and they reveal that they're not vaccinated, there are very real reasons for students not to be vaccinated. I just learned last week that some children are allergic to certain vaccines, you know. But also, even if it's just a personal choice, you know, we just need to have conversations with our students, with our children around that. But I I I just want to make sure that we give enough time so that that issue can really be thought out and really be, we can have preventative measures in place, you know, to 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 prevent or address any kind of divisiveness that could take place. And I think that's conversations in the classrooms. I think that's conversations around, you know, the dinner table. You know, we just have to be aware that people are not vaccinated for certain reasons. Or people might not want to share that they're vaccinated for certain reasons. Again, that's personal to them, but I I just want to make sure, you know, and and I say this, you you know, with my own daughter in mind, who would be, who is vaccinated, she's, you know, she's at high school, she is vaccinated. You know, I can't guarantee it, but she she would most likely continue to wear a mask. So she could be potentially, you know, people who know that she's vaccinated, and why are you, why are you wearing a mask? You're vaccinated. That's silly. And then the other side is, well, are you wearing a mask because you're not vaccinated? And why aren't you vaccinated? You know, like, so there's students that could potentially be getting questioned from both sides of the issue. You know, and I know there's other students like my daughter, so I'm not just speaking on her behalf. And I just want to make sure that we're able to address that because, you know, because I don't think it would be, you know, good to have that kind of culture come about. So, thank you.
Thank you, Gianna, and and we definitely can discuss implementation date as we move this discussion along. Just because Gianna brought it up, I'm just gonna call briefly on myself. Marty, can you just address the comment that came up in in visitor comments about teachers asking students about their vaccination status, if if you don't mind?
Certainly. For sure, we wouldn't want that to happen. And if if that is happening in the classroom, I would encourage parents and students to talk to a trusted adult about that, trusted administrator. But we, that that really should not be part of classroom conversation. Of course, sometimes, especially among younger learners, they they might be excited to announce to their classmates or their teacher that, you know, that they did or did not get a vaccination. But for sure, our teachers should not be asking that of students. And if that's the case, then we want to know about it.
Thank you, Marty. I think that Mary had her hand up.
Yes, Marty, I was wondering anecdotally if you know how the Long Meadow High School staff feels about masking and if they are in favor of, you know, off-road or just generally speaking, I don't know if you've collected data from them, but.
I'll I'll do my best to represent the conversations that I've had and and the feedback that I've gotten. And I'd say that they are worried about the enforcement and the monitoring, that they wouldn't want that to impede teaching and learning. And I think, as I talked to Principal Landers, he would say that, you know, it's important for that enforcement obligation to be taken on by the administrators. So in other words, that that wouldn't, that wouldn't mean, I think teachers would still need to refer, potentially refer individuals to the administration. But the enforcement, the expectation would be the enforcement and the monitoring would be managed by the administration. I think there are, you know, I think they're at a place now with, where they feel comfortable in their classroom settings with, you know, in in most cases, with students being, vaccinated students being unmasked. But for sure, there will be, you know, there, I suppose our teachers are, not unlike the cross section of the general population, there's a number of them that will will be uncomfortable, I suppose, with this approach in fairness.
If I could just follow up, I just want to envision going into a classroom, you take attendance, kids are filing in. I will be curious to hear if we do vote to have a differentiated masking policy. What time is being taken, like instructional time for a teacher to say, okay, I have to get my list? It's been updated. Who is required to wear masks? You know, and to do a check. I just think about time on learning and the management from a teacher point of view that that might cause me, if I were a teacher, a lot of anxiety to ensure that I am making sure that the family's wishes are being followed. So I just, I would be curious as time goes on, if we do move forward with this, to hear about the teachers' experiences. And even though we will have administrators enforcing, it's, you know, the teachers would be on the front lines of saying, this student, I'm having difficulty because I'm not, I'm uncertain. Or, you know, a child saying, no, my parents updated. And so we just have to have a really solid plan for real-time data for teachers and kind of monitor how many minutes of an instructional period are spent kind of navigating that.
Yeah, well said. I I agree. And I think that's, that's where it would be important to have a a mechanism in place that would allow us to sort of put the brakes on this. And and even if it were, you know, a temporary thing, let's say, hey, there's a couple of things that popped up that we we hadn't anticipated. And so we're gonna need students to mask up for, you know, next number of days until we have some protocol in place or we have some plan in place, either to address any instructional disruptions or, to Gianna's point, to, you know, potentially deal with any social implications. So I I would, I would think it would be important for us to be able to exercise that. I, you know, as opposed to reconvening the school committee, let's say, to to pull back on the trial period. So I think you you make a great point. Thank you.
I'm gonna go to Bronwyn and then Suzie.
Uh, thanks, Kevin. Um, so based on the data, we had thirty one high school students, perhaps, likely less because they might not all go to the high school. Some actually might be in college. Um, test positive since September first. That was on the juvenile data slide. So some of those kids are probably still in middle school, actually. So we've had less than thirty high school students test positive since September first. Is that accurate?
Yes, yeah. Yeah, in fact, I'd say.
Nine hundred plus?
Yeah, correct.
Okay.
And I'd say, you you're you're right, Bronwyn, that even if we were to scrape off the nineteen-year-olds, I I suspect that number would go far lower.
Right. Some of the kids are definitely still in middle school, twelve, possibly thirteen. And then some nineteen-year-olds are are in college. So that number goes into the into the twenties pretty easily out of nine hundred-plus students. Okay, I just wanted to make sure. In response to people who are concerned about the students in the high school giving other students a hard time or asking questions, things like that, I think there are some people that are, they're concerned about that, which is very understandable. But if we have, say, twenty percent approximately of the students that are unvaccinated, wearing masks, and they have an additional twenty seven percent that the parents are gonna require their students to mask, we're gonna be above forty percent of the students masked. So there's absolutely no way unless people volunteer the information. If someone's wearing a mask, there's no, there's no possible way for any other student or staff member to know if a student if a student or even a staff member, for that matter, is vaccinated. So um, I think that, that survey was really important. That percentage is uh, that probably could go somewhere between twenty-five to thirty-five percent, depending on how parents feel. Um, but it's not, it's not like it's only gonna be the unvaccinated kids and people, which if it was, it shouldn't be an issue anyways. Students should, you know, carry on with their own days. But for the people concerned about that, if we're gonna have twenty-seven percent additionally wearing masks, I d- I don't see how that could possibly be an issue. Um, and seeing Desi's requirement is that you can't unmask everybody yet. We, we have to continue following that. Um, and then just the last point, it's November seventeenth. If we wait till January third, I mean, it's like a month and a half away to implement this for um, to have everything lined up. I'm thinking, if, if that's the case, we're lining up like pool testing every Monday, like we better be lining up a pretty beefed-up system if we're gonna wait a month and a half. And that's just my opinion. It doesn't, it doesn't for me make much sense if it's November seventeenth to wait until uh, the beginning of January to um, implement this. And uh, since our last meeting, do you feel confident after your meetings with the administration at the high school, that they feel confident in their procedures?
I do. And I'll, ultimately, I have a lot of confidence in our students as well. They've, they've been great all along. You know, we, we already are working through enforcement and monitoring issues. So, you know, they're, they're sort of experienced with trying to reinforce mask behavior with, with high school students. And I think um, you know, th- this is a, masking is a, it's a, you know, it's a divisive issue, but I, I, I have not seen that play out with our students. And I would hope that would continue to be the case.
I'm, I'm very confident that, that it will be. I've also heard the same thing from a lot of teachers um, and students as well, that it's, you know, they, they've, they follow the rules and they're used to it. But um, a lot of them, maybe not so much as many of their parents, which is why this is a, a good idea. This is, the, the parents have the choice. So if they say their student can't unmask, then their student can't unmask. So um, if the high school admin feels uh, confident and I feel very confident in the high school admin, the high school teachers, and the high school students, um, uh, with that number, you know, say twenty-something, twenty-five out of nine hundred and fifty or whatever we have, um, and only those, what was it, four total t- positive tests for tests in state, which was pre-Ked as well, I assume.
Correct.
Um, I'm just not, I just don't see a reason to wait.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Um, you know, I'm, I'm remembering back to when the, when Desi's policy prior to the commissioner's mandate was recommended that every student mask in schools. But I don't recall that that recommendation um, came with a mandate for unvaccinated children. So I, I'm, one of the things I'm really struggling with is at the end of the day, this differentiated policy in and of itself is, is divisive, right? Because there is a segment of our population who won't be able to unmask. And that's, and that's a struggle. And I'm, I'm, I guess what I'm trying to do is, is just pull out all of the sides on this um, issue because I think it's important to note. Um, I know that there are many students who want this because they've, you know, a- and, and would um, be able to participate because they have been vaccinated and they feel a certain um, y- you know, like, hey, I've done what I've needed to, I'm, I needed to do to take off my mask and, you know, my parents support it, and this is great, right? And so we know that people feel that way. But then we know that there is a segment of the population who don't have that choice. And then I guess my biggest concern in all of this is ensuring that, y- you know, I, I understand the concerns around, you know, um, people finding out information, um, people questioning students and we can have every assurance and every faith in everyone, but it's, it's, it just takes one to make it not work. And so my concern is from a, you know, really a fundamental HIPAA perspective that the medical information, you know, the, the medical information regarding individuals is, is confidential and is, and is protected. And I just, um, I, I, I don't, I'm just wondering what assurances we have, both from the state, from a legal perspective, and from our own attorneys, from a legal perspective, that a differentiated policy will not put us in any jeopardy. And, and again, that's, this is just the legal part of it. It's not just the, I, I'm, I already, I already talked about the human side of this differentiated approach being potentially divisive and I, I, I've had time to think about it over the last week, and I think it's important to bring these issues up. From a, from a legal perspective, are we on solid ground implementing a differentiated policy? Um, regardless of the fact that we have, you know, the highest expectations of everyone in the community to do the right thing.
Suzie, I, I think you framed the issue really, really well. Um, and I think you are, we're, we're absolutely um, obligated to, to think that through. Uh, for, for the committee's consideration, the, the plan would be for our uh, lead nurse, our head nurse, to send a permission slip out to families who wouldn't go through the administration. Uh, and that would go to families of students that the nurse and the nurse alone knows to be vaccinated. We would gather that list and uh, the nurse would give, hand to the administration a list of individuals who have not been given permission to unmask. And so even administratively, we wouldn't know who on that list is vaccinated and who is not. So I did have an opportunity to uh, review this with the associate commissioner and also our own legal counsel. And both advised that it's a, that would be a sound approach. Having said that, I think, you know, Suzie's caution is, is really important. And it would be frankly, yet another reason why I'd want to be able to make some quick decisions if we found that, you know, sort of managerially, it wasn't protective in the way that we need it to be. So I, I think um, Suzie framed the issue really, really well. And, and I think it's, those are, you know, at the top of our list in terms of what's important in implementing this the right way.
Um, Prokoshay, just to follow up on that, can you, could you clarify Suzie's question about the, the legal aspect for us?
Yeah. Um, yeah, so the, the, if I'm uh, I hope I'm saying this the right way, that um, vaccination status is a um, arguably a sort of HIPAA, HIPAA-protected status. And so administratively, we, we wouldn't want to uh, have access to that for students. We wouldn't want to um, know which of our students are vaccinated or uh, or not. And so that's why we would cycle the permission slip process through our lead nurse. Did I, did I clarify that okay, Bronwyn? And Suzie, is that charity, is that fair to your concern on that?
So I think, uh, you know, again, what I'm looking for is, are we on, are, what signals do you have that we're on solid ground? I mean, I understand the associate commissioner said, yeah, you're on solid ground. But what legal solid ground are we on to, you know, make that distinct, make, to implement this policy? And regardless of whether or not we issue a permission slip, um, you know, I, I, I just, I, I worry to some degree about, you know, so you have a permission slip for everyone who can um, you're only going to be collecting permission slips for those who can unmask, is that correct?
We would, the, the lead nurse or a nurse would send out uh, a letter to families that the nurse and the nurse alone knows to be vaccinated. And so that letter would say something to the effect that uh, my records, it wouldn't be me sending it, but the nurse would send it saying, uh, school records indicate that, you know, your child has uh, received a vaccination for COVID. Uh, we are implementing an optional policy. Do you give your child permission to unmask? And so the nurse would generate a list of vaccinated individuals who have not been given permission to unmask and combine that with the list of uh, unvaccinated individuals. And so, and tha- that's the list that would go to the administration. So even the administration would not have any idea who on that list is vaccinated and who is not. The uh, if it were, you know, so the, I had an opportunity to review this on a couple of occasions with our legal counsel and as recently as this morning. And he in turn had uh, shared the approach with his, uh, his team and had confirmed that the approach would, you know, be protective of HIPAA and be permissible under uh, student record law as well. So if that, if, I wonder if it'd be helpful to sort of get that in writing from our legal counsel, if I, if I could, I'm certainly could pull that together for you.
I, I, I would very much think that we need a written opinion on this because the differentiated policy itself, um, you know, is is, you know, presents its challenges. And then add on to it this component of protected information. I think it's just um, i- it's important to really make sure this is airtight.
Yeah, happy to get that. I, I think that makes a lot of sense, for sure.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Superintendent, for that. And, and Suzie, thanks for asking about the legalities. I, I had the same um, same questions myself. So thank you for raising those points. Uh, I did just wanna return to um, the question of the divisiveness. I, you know, again, I appreciate the numbers that possibly forty percent or more will continue to wear masks. I do understand that that could potentially be a, a buffer. Um, but the um, the, the challenge comes, and, and I understand that, you know, the, the culture of the students has been non-divisive to this point, but I wanna point out that's because everybody's had to wear masks. There were no choices. So there wasn't really any opportunity to be divisive. Um, I also wanna be clear, every, every school committee meeting, I recognize the character and, you know, the, the amazingness of our LPS students. Uh, so I'm not in any way saying that they're just gonna go out there and bully everybody. Um, but I'm also a school counselor, social, emotional, behavioral for elementary, but I've worked with middle, uh, middle school students and high school students. Um, and human nature is just to be curious, and especially at this age. Um, so, and we see how, how different adults are reacting to the different sides of the issue. Um, and I just wanna be clear that there could potentially be human nature, um, not malicious, not, but more just curious. Um, or you think you're teasing, or y- you know, the same old, same old stuff that we know to be true of teenagers especially. So I just wanna, I just wanna ensure if we do go ahead, that we are protecting all students. Um, and I do think, you know, the timing of it, I think we need to be very thoughtful, very proactive, very preventative. And that takes a lot of time, a lot of discussions in the classrooms, a lot of work with the counselors, a lot of work with the teachers, to create that, that culture of, you know, like, mind your own business, um, and let's keep it moving. So um, I'm wondering if we, Kevin, do you know if we have a, what's our school committee meeting date in December? But that's, is that right after the Thanksgiving break? Cuz I was wondering, I, I would love to, now that we have, we wanna see, you know, the legalities in writing. Um, would it be possible to see a plan of implementation? You know, so let's say we were to move forward with saying, yes, we'd like to have, you know, mask optional. Yes, we'd like to start on, now maybe it's December sixth instead of first. Um, but I feel like y'all have done a great job all the time of bringing plans to us um, before something gets implemented. And I would just like to see the plans for the proactiveness in terms of the, you know, creating a culture of, of inclusivity instead of uh, divisiveness, accidental or not, human nature or not. I just, that is something that's important to me. Um, and so I don't know if that's possible.
For sure. If there's any additional information the committee needs to make a informed decision, happy to bring that to you. And totally recognize that this is, this is a really challenging issue. And, and I'm not sure, you know, where we're going to land on this, but I hope it, at the end of the day, I hope it, it demonstrates uh, our commitment to the community to, again, really inspect and review our mitigation practices and, and, you know, be thoughtful and be safe about what we do if we do decide to move towards the green side of that continuum. So I, 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 you know, this is a, a really rich discussion. And, you know, again, I, I, there, there's so many reasonable opinions on all sides of this. And I, you know, if, if it, if it's a, if it makes sense, uh, you know, we will happily bring back any additional information for you that you need on the, at your meeting on the thirtieth.
Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yep, thanks for that, Marty. And I guess one, two additional legal opinions I personally would like to know is, is the, a- and it sounds like that's what Suzie was getting at, but the, the actual law that Desi put out there, with the guidance of vaccinate, discriminating against or segregating, whatever the heck you wanna call it, um, between vaccinated, unvaccinated, is that legal? Or is that gonna come back to them? And then could it come back to us in turn? Um, and then also, Marty, can you just talk through the confidentiality side for the staff? Um, we talked about the students, but I'm assuming we're gonna need to have an understanding of the staff as well. And I think on the last um, presentation we did, there was a, there was a number of staff um, that were still unvaccinated and vaccinated. Their information should be confidential. Um, how are we gonna handle that as well?
Great question. Uh, in the case of the staff, they have voluntarily submitted uh, evidence of vaccination to HR. And so that gives us greater um, sort of ability to understand which staff are vaccinated and which are not. So uh, right now, uh, the town, the HR department in town has a, that could furnish us with a list of staff members who have been vaccinated. And so uh, you know, the, the expectations uh, for staff would be similar to students. We would have to exercise that same level of enforcement and monitoring and, and we would wanna make enforcement and monitoring and, and we would want to make sure that it doesn't become kind of a wedge issue for staff as well.
So in that, uh, just as a follow up, Kev, real quick, so is that, is the nurse also, would, would that individual be responsible for tracking all of the staff monitoring, executing, schooling, whatever you want to do?
In that case, the administrators could have direct access to that list of staff members who have voluntarily submitted evidence of, uh, vaccination. So that it wouldn't, uh, it wouldn't be something that, um, because they had voluntarily submitted that evidence, it's, it doesn't have that same level of protection, that information. But again, these are certainly questions that, um, if it would be helpful, we could ask the attorney to get us more of a written opinion on this, if it would be helpful to your decision-making process.
Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, I'm just trying to follow the logic. Um, I understand the voluntary submission of vaccination information. Um, so is then the assumption that everyone who didn't submit vaccination information is assumed to be unvaccinated? And that's how it will be? I'm, I'm just.
Yeah, it, it would be, I, I don't, we wouldn't make that assumption, but it would simply be that if they had not submitted evidence of vaccination, they wouldn't be permitted to unmask. The only way they'd be permitted to unmask is if they had submitted evidence of vaccination to HR.
Marty, just one or two things from me. I, I just wonder if you could speak a little more to uh, Hopkinton or other places that have already done this. And, and I guess sort of two things I'm curious about. If, if you could speak to the health outcomes, uh, you know, what has COVID looked like in those schools? And, and also if there's anything you've learned from talking to these schools that, that was surprising or unanticipated that will help us as we think about this decision?
And in the case of Hopkinton, uh, demographically comparable, I'd say, um, and size of the school is comparable. They, they've had, they've had one, uh, student, high school student case since they went with this mask optional approach. And, uh, my understanding is that that case was a result of out of school transmission. Uh, the superintendent reported to me that they have not seen, it has not been a, a disruption socially. And so she has described their experience as a, as a positive one. It was one other district that I spoke with that did not pursue this through parental permission. And, uh, that particularly district got off to, I'd say, a rocky start. And so that really is what convinced me of the, you know, if this is a direction that the committee would like to go, that, that's what convinced me of the, of the importance of securing, uh, parental permission. So, uh, it's been a, it's been a, a positive experience generally for Hopkinton.
Thank you. Um, Marty, do you mind just stopping and sharing your screen for just a little bit? Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
I, I think it, I think it's, while I understand that, and I, I think we all saw, or hopefully we all saw the NPR article about um, Hopkinton. Um, they did just recently, uh, release an article that, which was certainly, um, yes, upbeat that everything was really going well. Some of the students were indicating that, you know, seeing their teachers' faces again was a, was a great morale booster. That was sort of the title of the article. But I think there's, um, there's something to be said for the, the distinction between Long, Long Meadow High School right now and Hopkinton High School. And that's the number of vaccinated versus unvaccinated students and, and and community, the, the entire school community. Because, um, they were above ninety-five percent of their students were vaccinated and we're at eighty percent. The fifteen percent percentage points is a big difference. So I, I just think it's important to point that out. Um, that we're not talking exactly apples and apples here. So there's a larger, there's a larger room for, you know, potential challenges to come into play with a differentiated policy like this. That's, that's my biggest, uh, concern in this.
Thank you, Suzie. And, and again, just to, I'm just gonna say it in different words. There are more unvaccinated students at Long Meadow High than there are in Hopkinton. And there's, that's just a fact, right?
Yes, if I said that wrong, I'm sorry, but.
I think you said it right. I just wanted to say it in, in using different words, saying exactly the same thing. Yeah, absolutely. Uh, Jamie, go ahead.
Yep, I, I completely agree Suzie. And just to add to what both you said, there are significantly more staff in administration that are vaccinated at ours versus Hopkinton as well. And obviously the current DESI guidelines make it very difficult for us, um, to, to deal with that in a very just manner based off of what our priorities and what we've all agreed to over the last months of putting out, um, our goals as an organization. So, um, you know, I, I think, you know, just to point both those out, this isn't just students. There's also, you know, a population that has a right within the staff that we've got to represent and, you know, at least, you know, speak up for them as well because it's their right to do what's right for them. So.
Thank you, Jamie. Uh, Nicole, go ahead.
Thank you. I just wanted to add on to that, um, related to students who might not be vaccinated or might be at higher risk as well. Um, I think all of us are eager to relax into fewer and fewer restrictions. I think we've, we've all, you know, had some fatigue over the last year and a half. Um, but as it stands now, numbers in Massachusetts and Hammond County are slowly beginning to tick upwards again. And with holiday travel and exposures approaching, that trend might be continuing for a few weeks. And we know that our main goal this year has been to make sure that our schools are open. And our students are in school as much as possible. And we want that for all of our students, including students and staff, um, who might be at a higher risk for vaccinations and for COVID, including students who are too young to have been fully vaccinated, um, at this point. And that we have a lot of families, um, who are multi-generational, either in their household or in their family, who might have students who will be at the high school and not be masked and returning home to younger siblings who are masked or parents or grandparents who are at high risk of COVID or vaccination, um, or getting a vaccination and are unable to. So I really believe that we are so close to a return to more normalcy, especially as each age group becomes eligible for vaccinations and more students begin to get vaccinated and more people within the community begin to get vaccinated. But for now, we know that the best way to reduce that transmission is for both people to be masked. Um, and I think that giving ourselves some time to see those numbers come down a bit more and to give space for those who might be at a higher risk, those students who we also have an obligation to ensure their access to school every single day, every day that we're open. That's our priority this year is to make sure that our students can be in the building with their teachers, with their classmates, not out of the building, um, or feeling at risk of having to be out of the building.
Thank you, Nicole. We do have a possible motion that relates to the high school. If anybody would care to put it forward. And if no one moves it, then we will move on with the presentation. Bronwyn, go ahead.
I was just wondering if Dr. O'Shea was, um, um, indicating that the legal opinions in writing were going to be, um, available soon?
What I, what I heard Bronwyn is that we have the legal opinions, um, by, by voice and that Marty is going to follow up and get them in writing. So that's what I heard, but I, I don't want to speak for Marty if I'm, I'm incorrect.
That's, yeah, that was my understanding. We could pin it down in writing. If, if, I suppose it becomes moot if the motion isn't moved and if this is not the route we're going, so, uh, let's still get it, but it becomes less urgent, I guess.
So, so again, uh, Gianna, just a second. I, I would just say that our attorney has said this is legal, but we don't have it in writing. Is, is that, am I saying that correctly, Marty? Yeah, okay. Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I was just wondering, given that we do want to see that in writing, given that it would be fair for the, the public as well to be able to see that in writing. Um, the thoughts about an actual draft plan or plan of implementation? Um, the concerns about, you know, if we move forward, what timing would that be? Um, and that we have a meeting on November thirtieth, um, where we could receive more of that information that we're talking about today. Um, I just, I, I don't know how to, do, do we, do we just table and possibly bring that motion up on November thirtieth?
I, I'll give you my, uh, take on that, which is if we wait until November thirtieth, I don't see how we implement this the day later. I, I think my personal opinion is that when Marty says, the lawyers say this is legal, I believe him and that we will get it in writing. And I, I don't think we should delay voting because we don't have something in writing that Marty has talked to the lawyer about and has assured us is legal. And again, that's just my personal opinion. Everybody else can disagree with me and we can take this up on the thirtieth, but I, I don't, I don't think we should delay because we have a legal opinion. We just don't have it in writing. Yeah, that's my thing. But if nobody moves it, then it doesn't matter.
Hey man, I don't have that motion in front of me.
Sorry Bronwyn, I, that was my, can you say that again? I just had my sound down, please. I'm sorry.
I don't have that motion in front of me. Um.
It's on, it's on the, um, annotated agenda. It's not the first one. You have to scroll down. It's the second one.
Okay, hold on. Am I still unmuted?
Yes, you are.
Okay. Um, I guess this just feels like a little bit of an awkward situation. Um, like you said, um, you know, Dr. O'Shea talked to the lawyers and, um, you know, he's reporting back to us what they told him, which I think that everyone, uh, no one doubts, doubts that. Um, it's seems as though some people will be have more comfortable having it in writing. But your point is that it's just a matter of getting it in writing. So could we add that to the motion?
I think we can add anything we would like to the motion.
Okay.
Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Yeah, I, I just, I, I want to be clear that it, it's not just the legal opinion in writing. There are other, there, there's a whole plan. Um, you know, and I trust superintendent, I trust the team. I, you know, I know that their intentions are to make sure that the logistics and the, you know, there's a logistics aspect. But, you know, as I've already said, there's the social emotional piece. Um, I just think it would be nice to, to, to see how that's going to work. Um, again, I, I trust superintendent, trust the team. I know that those pieces are going to fit together. Um, but the timing of this in terms of December first versus January fourth, um, is just what I'm trying to, trying to work through.
And, and my, my comment on that is we often pass motions without knowing how things are going to get implemented and we trust that our administrators are going to implement them. Um, and I'm confident that with the time between now and December first, if we decide to do December first, they will have a robust plan. Um, I just am nervous. If we want to do this, I think we should say we want to do this. And if we don't, we should say we don't. But I think we need to trust our administrators that they can implement this. They've told us that they can do it. And I know that they share your concerns, Gianna. And I know that if things go sideways, then they're going to say, no, we need to stop this. It's not working. Again, that's my take. Um, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I move that the school committee authorized the suspension of the face mask policy E B C F A as it relates to fully vaccinated individuals at Long Meadow High School and authorize superintendent to implement, implement a mask optional plan as presented after receiving legal opinion in writing. This suspension is temporary until a revised face mask policy for Long Meadow High School is written and approved.
Thank you, Bronwyn. Do we have a second?
Second.
We have a motion and a second. Uh, Diane, I just want to make sure that you caught the addition to that. Okay. So you're good. All right. Excellent.
I didn't put a date in there, Kevin.
Uh, the date I think is in there per Marty's policy. If my understanding is correct, then on his policy, it says December first to December twenty-second as the trial period. Did I, did I get that right? I think it's in there. So I think if we wanted a different date, we would have to, uh, revise the plan or the motion. But as it stands, the plan says implementation for December first.
Okay, thank you.
Yes. Do, do we have additional discussion? Mary?
I just want to clarify that Marty has the ability to send the policy at any time if something isn't going well. And I know that's in there, but I want to re-say that out loud, right? So if something, if the monitoring is difficult or it's causing disruptions to student learning, we don't have to weaken the, you can just say, we're suspending.
Absolutely. I think that's a critical part of the plan. Important for us to recognize if we did vote for this. It doesn't mean that this is going on for three weeks regardless of what happens during those three weeks. Uh, and I also think it's important that after those three weeks, if we approve this, then we will be able to reevaluate and figure out what makes sense moving forward. And I also think, again, if we approve this, it will give us some really valuable information about what we might do at the middle schools and the elementary schools as we move forward. Uh, additional comments. Gianna, please.
Thank you, Kevin. I, um, also just wanted to remind everybody of, of Jamie's point and, um, I think some others as well. Um, and I would love to see the, uh, educator staff input regarding this, um, just really given, and I know you will, Superintendent, I know your team will. Um, but that is also a big piece. Um, and I would just love to see that their input is integrated into the plan.
Thank you, Gianna. Mary, please.
Yes, John, I just totally agree. Going back to the point that I made earlier in the meeting that if staff is reporting disruptions to time learning and within the class period or it's difficult to monitor, um, I think that that would be cause for reevaluating. And I would like to know that staff has the ability to communicate that information and that action would be taken promptly on something like that.
Sure. Uh, I think we, we would want to keep that feedback loop open, uh, from, from students, from parents, from, from teachers. Uh, you know, frankly, you know, I, I would even want to reserve the right. want to reserve the right to come back to you on November thirtieth and say, hey, you know, as, as the, as the architecture of this continued, if we, we decided that there were some snags and, and we wanna, we wanna hit the pause button. So I, I, I think the, the cautions that have been expressed tonight are spot on and and they're, they, they, your concerns are the things that will be at the top of our list and would be the reason for us to to pause, uh, at a moment's notice on this if, if we felt like it was compromising, you know, what we're trying to do for sure.
Mary, go ahead.
One more comment. I believe that in Hopkinton, their, um, differentiated masking policy went into effect at the beginning of this month. So if we meet again on November thirtieth, they will have had it in place for a month. And as Susie said, their numbers are different than our numbers, but I still would be interested in um, how things are going there and what, you know, I, I would just, as a as a point of interest, I think it would be important to mention that at our next meeting and to monitor how and are there other districts that are similar to ours in the state that are doing this? Or is it only Hopkinton?
Uh, when we were pulling this together, we were aware of, of three districts. Um, I think by the, if we were to do this by December one, I expect that list would grow. So there would be, we'd have more opportunity to talk to other districts. I'm aware of Norwell, Hopkinton, and I believe it's Ashland, uh, is the, is the third one. But I, I just, that, that list is growing uh, each day. Uh, there are over twenty districts that I'm, that I've aware of that have submitted to D E S I to get the, uh, to demonstrate the eighty percent threshold.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
I just wanted to add one more thing, um. Uh, I don't, Dr. O'Shea, I don't know if, um, when you spoke to the lawyers, if you talked about, um, the staff as well, which Suzie and Jamie mentioned. Um, if, if that could be included in the written opinion, that would, um. I mean, I don't think I have to put as, as part of the motion. If, if you don't mind doing that, that would be super helpful. Thanks.
Yeah, for sure.
And, and I also think that in the November, the November thirtieth meeting, if case rates are very different in Long Meadow, uh, we could also respond to that at that meeting. Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Yeah, thank you, Bronwyn, for bringing that up. I mean, those are, those are some key issues, as, as are all of the other issues that have been brought up. This is, this is not without, um, lots of opportunities to, you know, and I don't mean to be, you know, negative about it, but there, there's lots of opportunities for this to go wrong. And so I, I, I think it's just so important that everything that Gianna, you know, mentioned, the plan for, you know, ensuring that this is, this is dealt with from a community perspective within, and sensitivity towards everyone. Um, i- is really critical and sensitivity even within, y- y- you know, like, like Jamie said with the staff, right? Like, you know, ensuring that everyone's positions are, um, honored. And, and that's a really tough thing to do, um, in the current environment. It just is. Um, so it's, uh, Dr. O'Shea, we're asking a lot of you in this, um, to make this happen. So, um, I, I just, I, I, you know, I, I thank you for being confident in, in what's ready. I also thank you for, for acknowledging the, um, the, um, you know, that you need the ability to pull the plug on it, um, and regroup. Um, and I hope you'll, y- y- you will really be thinking about that at every turn. Um, I do worry a little bit. This is a lot on your plate. This is a lot on the plates of, um, you know, your nurses and the administrators. Um, but if you feel confident that this is, this is something that can happen, um, I, I just, just wanna, want it to be eyes wide open.
I, uh, thank you. Uh, I, I appreciate that and, and it is, it is ambitious. Um, and, uh, and, and we do have to proceed carefully and even this conversation tonight has, you know, truly sort of stretched my thinking and, and, and made us want to, you know, if it is supported and, um, we, we would wanna be doubly careful based on the the conversation we heard tonight.
Cool.
Thank you. Um, just to say again, thank you. I know that a lot of time has gone into this, um, and a lot of energy. And I appreciate that, um, a great deal. I'm curious, I think I know the answer to this, but just to clarify and in case anyone else is wondering, um, the adestation form and its approval, is there an expiration on that? If we were to choose to not pass this tonight, could it be brought up again at a later meeting? And passed later, or is there a deadline?
I, I don't see any reason why it couldn't be brought up at a future meeting. I'm, I'm not aware of any, uh, expiration on the confirmation from D E S I.
Thank you.
Additional comments. All right, I am seeing none. So we will move to a vote. And again, the vote is on the plan that Marty has presented. If we vote yes, then we will go to the mask optional policy that Marty outlined, starting on December first for a trial period from December first to December twenty-second in the high school. Any questions before we vote? All right, Mary.
Yes.
Gianna?
Yes.
Nicole?
No.
Suzie?
Yes.
Bronwyn?
Yes.
Jamie?
Yes.
And yes for me. That passes six to one. Um, Marty, thank you to you and everybody, uh, who's worked on this and who will continue to work on this. Um, thank you to everybody for the discussion. Before we move on, do we have a soccer score?
Yes.
I think we lost.
We lost.
Oh, crushing. What a great season for, uh, for our, our boys soccer team.
And that's based on the report from Mr. Landers?
Yeah, uh, that's the math.
So what was the final score?
Uh, he may have been reporting on the.
What was?
Wait, we've got two games going on, right?
Can we get, we need to get this right.
We don't have official confirmation on the soccer squad. I don't know. They were going into.
Oh, okay, all right, all right, all right. Hold the presses. Overtime is what we hear. All right. Goodness gracious, we're all on the edge of our seats here. All right. We are, we are moving on. Um, Marty, you wanna take the next, uh, item?
All right, onward. Uh, so, um, thank you. And, uh, I you know, again, recognize that part of the hard work that the committee's involved in and that, that, that the thoughtfulness that we've given this is really to hopefully demonstrate that, you know, we're committed to reviewing our practices and, and you know, look, look for safe opportunities to be less restrictive. So on to, uh, the preschool issue, um, preschool masking. Uh, in this case, I will start with the survey that we sent home to parents and caregivers of preschool students. And I should mention that, uh, Jean Fontaine, Director of People's Services, is on the call, uh, with us. And she, she has a, a lot of insight and perspective on the program and, and understands uh, sort of on the ground operation of that program as well as anybody. So uh, we had asked our preschool, uh, parents and caregivers if they were comfortable sending their child to preschool if the mandatory mask mandate were to be lifted. And you can see the results there, that fifty-three point three percent reported that they would be comfortable. Thirty-seven point three reported that they would not be and, uh, nine percent, a little more than nine percent indicated they were not certain. Uh, when we asked the question, if the, uh, if the preschool mandatory mask mandate were lifted, would you continue to keep your child enrolled in the L P S program? So this, this, the only respondents to this would have been those folks who had said that they were not comfortable, uh, up above. And so there are twenty-eight respondents here. Uh, twenty-five percent, which would have been seven respondents, uh, indicated that they would, um, not enroll, keep their child enrolled. Uh, forty-six point four indicated they were not certain and twenty-eight point six said that they would continue. And then, um, I guess this, this slide, uh, tells us as much as anything about how challenging this issue is. And that when we asked, uh, parents if they would continue to have their preschool child mask if the mandate were lifted, forty-seven point one percent said, uh, no, and fifty-six, uh, percent, excuse me, fifty-two point nine percent said that they would. Some additional information, again, just to set the, the broad context for your discussion. I think this was information that the committee had asked for. Um, and this is our best understanding of area preschools. You can see that most area preschools, uh, in fact, require masking for pre-K students. Many of them sort of simply follow the lead of the public schools and their communities. Uh, there are, uh, two communities that we, that have been reported to us, Lobo and Aguan, that have said that they, um, that they do not require, uh, masking for their pre-K students. Uh, and you'll see on the right, the, the number of reported, the cases, uh, reported preschool cases that were reported to me by the superintendents in those districts. You can see that, you know, really across the board, uh, people's experience has been, uh, been good in terms of the number of, uh, positive cases at preschool level, certainly at least compared to what we've seen uh, other points of this pandemic. So the, the preschool mask discussion, you know, again, this is one of those situations. There are, there are certainly reasoned opinions on all sides of this issue. And, uh, um, in your packet is a uh, provo- proposed revision to E B C F A if the committee were to, uh, opt to um, have mandatory masking be discontinued at the preschool level. There are certainly, uh, reasons that it makes sense to have this conversation now. I, I think we, we need to be, you know, sort of candid that there are disadvantages to wearing masks. We would rather students be in school unmasked, right? And, and some of those have been brought up, um, in, during the public comment period or by members of this committee. Uh, test and stay has been an asset to us, as, as we noted earlier. Uh, it has served to keep kids in school when they have been identified as quarantinable close contacts. And then, uh, the experience of communities around us with, without a requirement, you can see that, that, you know, it's a limited sample size. Uh, but in, at least in the communities that we asked, we didn't see, uh, a significant amount of transmission. So, having, having sort of thought long and hard about this and, and, uh, um, talked to, you know, people that I count on, uh, members of this committee, uh, having gotten input from staff and having reviewed the results of the survey, it would be our administrative recommendation tonight that we continue with masking, at least for the, for the time being. Um, went back to my Latin roots in high school, my, my one year of Latin that I took. Uh, so pro temp, just, you know, for the time being, doesn't mean that we, uh, would, you know, don't want to continually review this. But our recommendation would be that we continue masking at the preschool. And, uh, below, on the, on the bottom side of this slide are, are the reasons that uh, we believe that it makes sense to continue with masking at the preschool. Uh, significantly, it would give families time to access vaccine for older siblings. So if these preschool children have siblings that are in that five to eleven range, those families are right now just sort of, uh, accessing vaccines if it makes sense for them as a family. And so that, that obviously provides greater protection to the family if, if more members of the family are vaccinated. Uh, we've talked a little bit about this, the, the integration of the preschool into Wolf Swamp Road. Uh, Jean can speak more specifically to this, but they are, you know, they, they work in the related, related art spaces and they're in the help office, they're in the main office, uh, but it is a, a, you know, fully integrated into that facility. Um, one of the concerns, one of our biggest concerns is the, the potential to increase close contacts subject to test and stay and quarantine. Uh, while test and stay has been really advantageous for us, uh, we didn't, we haven't seen significant consent levels at the preschool level. Only thirty, uh, at the count that we had only thirty-five test and stay consents out of the, uh, seventy or so uh, students who access that program. And so, uh, even when we have had to run test and stay at K in one, uh, we've seen it, it's a challenge, you know, it really requires, uh, engagement with families. We, we in fact have opened up, uh, the school to parents if they wanted to be with their child uh, during a test and stay event. Um, one of the concerns is that if we opted to, uh, eliminate masking at preschool, would it require, uh, an increased distance standard? Would we, would we want to, um, extend the distance, uh, between our preschoolers? And I think we all know that the challenge that presents and, and the instructional downside of that, I, I believe is significant if, if these children are able to, uh, be close to each other and their teachers. Uh, and the practicality of it is, is, is questionable as well. And, and still on the books are, are the recommendations from Mass D P H from, from the A A P. Our town health officials have been, uh, were firm in their opinion that we ought to continue masking at this level. I think the, the, the parent feedback from the survey, at least the way, the way I've read it, it, it suggests at least that there's, that our preschool parents are uneasy uh, with the idea of requiring or eliminating the mask requirement. Perhaps there are other conclusions that, that, that we will reach when we, when we look at it together. Uh, the staff has, has, um, through the L E A and through a letter that the committee got, has indicated that, you know, they, they see, um, they're not in favor of eliminating the requirement. I think the staff's response to the, the downside and disadvantages of masking and the staff's, you know, really professional creative response to the challenge of masking has been amazing. Uh, they, they, you know, we, we work with families and with children really effectively if, if masking presents instructional challenges or behavioral challenges. And again, certainly Jean can speak to that, uh, more succinctly and better than I can. But, uh, so, you know, understanding that there are reasonable opinions on both sides of this discussion. Uh, at the end of the day, I, our recommendation is that we continue with masking, but I totally respect the perspective and, uh, of, of the committee on this. You, you are as tuned into this issue as we are administratively. And, and I know you've received a lot of feedback from community members and we're happy to answer any questions that you might have about the recommendation that we have for you on this tonight. So. I'll stop there.
Thank you, Marty. Can, do you mind, um, stopping sharing the screen? That would just be easier to see folks. Um, Su- Suzie, go ahead.
Thank you. Um, during our last meeting, um, I had asked about, thank you for presenting, uh, some of the items that I had asked about. One of the items I was curious about is the number of students who already have a, um, uh, an exemption for wearing masks. The percentage of students in, in the program who already have a mask exemption.
Yeah. Uh, we did look into that. I, I should have included it as a bullet. There are two students that, uh, currently are working with a mask exemption at the preschool at Wolf Swamp.
Okay.
Yeah.
Um, and when students are when there's a need to remove masks, what, you know, how ha- how have our educators responded? When students present with a need to, you know, perhaps read people's faces or have, have someone see their faces, or there's a, there's a challenging situation happening, what, what has been the response of, of educators?
Yeah, so you mean in the moment when there's, there's sort of a behavioral need or. Yeah. So you mean in the moment when there's, there's sort of a behavioral need or an instructional need?
Correct.
Yeah, I mean, a child is, you know, let's say they're crying and they have a soggy mask. Okay, let's, you know, let's, let's get you another mask. Uh, if, if a child is, um, you know, struggling behaviorally, uh, they might be, uh, removed from the room with a paraprofessional and be given the opportunity to, uh, breathe deeply without a mask. And I think that they're also, you know, exercising the flexibility that they can under our policy with regard to mask breaks. We have, um, students with, uh, and instructors with clear masks. And Jean, and you know, feel free to, to jump in here.
Well, I think in speech therapy, where a lot of our preschoolers do have therapy for speech and language, um, they do have, we have student clear masks, um, multiple ones. So kids have those. The speech pathologists have masks with the clear cutout as well. But certainly if a student is struggling, we're gonna, we're gonna give them a mask break and, um, console them and, and try to make things right.
Thank you. Um, just a quick, uh, follow up. I had it and it's gone. Um, I'll come, come back to me. Late.
Brown, go ahead.
Thanks. Uh, Marty, can you put that screen share up again if you don't mind? Particularly the part about, um, with, uh, reasons to continue masking. Okay, thanks. So I guess my question is, you know, reasons to continue masking, you know, at this time for now indicates we would lift it potentially at some point. Other than, um, time for families to access vaccines for older siblings? I guess we could get more, um, consents for test and stay, but which of these other things, um, changes so this, this doesn't become an issue where they're wiring them till June?
That's, that's a great question. Uh, I, you know, why I hope that's not the case. I, I think one of the things that could change is, uh, the state's response after January fifteenth. And so, you know, the question would be, will the Department of Education turn this back to localities more? And so by that date, we're, we're, we're beyond the holidays. Families have had greater access to vaccinations. And perhaps there's a decision that is made that is incorporates all of Wolf Swamp as opposed to an isolated program. So I think the, the, the time factor, I think there are a few things that could evolve over the next month or so that would make it, uh, you know, make it, make the timing work better for this decision.
I guess I'm wondering which ones in particular, because I mean, you said maybe when the state makes a different decision, but already the state doesn't have a mask mandate for pre K. They just have a recommendation.
Right.
So
Yeah.
that would mean that, um, the A A P, um, like, I just don't know. It worries me that not enough of these bullets will switch over and we're just gonna keep going and going and going. Clearly this, these, um, preschoolers aren't going to be able to get vaccinated for a couple of years at this point. So it worries me that, uh, we won't be able to take a lot of these bullets off of the list. And these are the reasons to continue masking. So that's just a, a major concern for me. And something that's encouraging for me is that we've only had one case. And then the experience of Agwam and Ludlow that have had mask optional since September or August, whenever they started school. Ludlow had one case, Agwam had four. And Westside, probably similar in size, Agwam for their pre K had less than five. So maybe around the same as Agwam. One masked mandated, one optional masking. So there is some data to support unmasking our, our pre K. And again, this, this list just concerns me in terms of not enough of these things going away in the near future and those, those kids getting stuck, um, wearing the mask until the end of the year.
If I can just speak to the, um, integration into Wolf Swamp. So one of the data points that we don't have on the other communities is whether or not their integrated preschool is embedded into an elementary school or not. So I can speak to West Springfield, it is not. So it's a separate facility. So I think what makes our preschool unique is that it's part of a K, it's a pre K to five elementary school. And those kids are part of that whole community. So I guess when I'm looking at it, if we're not talking about, um, changing the mandate right now for K to five, I don't know why we're singling out one grade level that is accessing the same facility. So, um, and this is kind of my opinion, but, um, is, I'm not saying never, but I'm not sure why we're looking at it now to say one particular grade. Um, so we didn't do that at the middle school. We're not doing that at the high school. So I'm just wondering that. And again, not, um, I, I would love for all of us to not be wearing masks. But, um, I think that, that's a big issue for me. And I think, um, makes it really hard to have for little kids. So kindergartners, like to see preschoolers that don't have to wear a mask, but kindergartners, you know, right now still need to. So, um, I just think that the integration into that building, it's one school, it's one school community. Um, and they're a big part of it. So.
You mentioned Westside. Um, they are mask mandated. And you said that they're a separate preschool?
Yeah, their, their preschool is a, it's an early childhood center. So it's separate from, it's not in a neighborhood elementary school.
Right, but there's still mask mandated. I'm not sure I understand the, the point.
I'm saying I think it would be easier if we were, if it was a separate facility. So, you know, and I don't know if Agwam and Ludlow have separate facilities or if they're integrated into a K to five building. That's a data point I don't know that we have here.
We, we definitely should have that if these, if those are the, uh, schools we asked Marty to look at. And Marty, unless Agwam changed, it was within another school previously.
Yeah, I, I, I don't know with certainty. I can tell you that I, I asked if it's an integrated preschool in the sense that is it, are there, um, special education students with regular peer, peer models? Um, so in that sense, they're, they're integrated. But the, the physical setting, I think I'd have to get you some additional.
Agwam, actually Agwam is also a separate facility. Their integrated preschool is not embedded in an elementary school. I don't know about Ludlow.
Agwam is in a standalone, it's in a, it's in a separate, it's not in a, it's not embedded in an elementary school.
Right, it's in an early childhood center as well.
I'm just concerned that these, um, some of these just won't go away. That's all. And we're just gonna keep, um, because these kids have never a chance to get vaccinated. So.
And I, I share that concern, Brown one. I, I think we, we just need to continually reevaluate it and, and, you know, maybe, maybe we, again, depending on, I'm not sure how this is gonna, where we're gonna land on this, but depending on the committee's decision, but we could always go back out and resurvey, uh, families to kind of gauge their readiness. We could, um, see where we are with test and stay consents. We could, uh, gain some better sense of, you know, what the five to eleven vaccination rate is in town. So I hope there are, I hope, you know, the needle will move on enough of these bullets where, you know, we could come back with a recommendation to, uh, to get rid of that requirement. But so I, I, I share that. I share your concern that, and I, and I wouldn't want us to be static with this at all. I, I think we ought to, you know, again, sort of continually review the, the reasonability of, of the safety of, of, of dropping that requirement.
Yeah, Brown one, I, I'm just gonna jump in here just for a little bit. Thank you for bringing that up. But I think that's a concern we all share. Um, and, and the, the vaccination thing is interesting. I, I do think that these kids are gonna get vaccinated maybe sooner than we think, but I, I, I think it's unlikely they'll get vaccinated before the end of the school year. My hope is that the pieces of this that move are the time for families to vaccinate older siblings. That's gonna move into the reason to discontinue max, masking. Um, integration into Wolf Swamp, I think if this is tied to the Wolf Swamp discussion, that's gonna come later on in the year. That's gonna move into the other column. And then I also, um, am curious to see what happens with the feedback from staff and parents, because those could also move. And so if those things move, then I think we have a very different discussion than we're having tonight. Um, and, and I think, you know, we, we all are looking for this off, off ramp for these kids, absolutely. Uh, I, I know folks had hands up. Uh, I'm gonna go Jamie and then Suzie.
Just for clarification, Marty or Jean, um, so we're saying there's only two children that currently have been approved to not wear a mask during school day. If that is the case, I think I heard that right. How many have been rejected, uh, um, with regards to a request to take the mask off from the parent or rejected by us or rejected by their physician?
Uh, I wouldn't know how many physicians have not signed off on a mask exemption, but I personally haven't, um, denied any exemptions that had come to me. And I've asked, uh, the administrators there to be sure that, you know, these things cross my desk because I just wanna have some understanding of what the, what it looks like. So I, I'm not aware of any, any exemptions that have come to us from a physician that have been denied. I think we would want to work with families to make sure that we've got the right, the right things in place for that, for the medical needs of a child or, or the behavioral needs of that child.
Got it. And yeah, and just my, uh, final comment, I mean, I said it last time too. This is, I mean, I look at this as, this is a common, common sense thing. Um, I always kind of come back to common sense that, you know, there's a lot of obviously concerns and whatnot, but you come back as the best way we can educate these child. Take everything else out of it is without the mask. So if we have the opportunity to do that in a reasonably safe manner where we've only had one instance throughout this whole year, which is ahead of every other school that we're talking about, including the high school, that we all just signed off on, um, I don't see how we don't do it for the kids and let the parents make the decision of what's right for the fam. I just, if it was my child, I would say he's gonna learn or she is gonna learn better without a mask on. Uh, it's just common sense. Um, so that's just my two cents on it.
Thank you, Jamie. Suzie?
Yeah, um, Marty, can you clarify what you just stated? So you, you are involved in making the decision on who gets the exemption? Is that correct?
No, I think it's a, it's more of a team decision, but I, I'm aware of all the exemptions that are, are requested. But it's, it's really, it's, you know, the first review of that is happening with the, the team at the, at the preschool.
Okay, and, but it sounds like, it sounds like exemptions aren't being, are or aren't being entertained unless they're accompanied by a doctor's note? Is that correct?
Yeah, they have to be accompanied by a doctor's note.
Okay.
Yeah, and, and frankly, we're finding that, you know, physicians are being judicious about it, that they're, you know, uh, so the, the physicians' notes that we've received, we have honored. And I would, I would continue to honor, you know.
Okay, thank you. I just wanted to make sure because if we're making, it sounded as if you were making decisions about unmasking that weren't necessarily medical. And if that were the case, that would be, we wouldn't be guaranteeing the mandate was actually in place anyway. So I, I just think it's important to clarify that. Thank you.
Yeah, thank you.
Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I have a.
Hey, hey, Kev, can I interrupt real quick? Just so you know, Carney scored, they're in penalty kicks with the, uh, the, uh, soccer game right now. So first goal, it's one nothing, Long Meadow, so you know.
Wait, what, yeah?
No, I got distracted by Jamie's breaking news.
What? I need to pull my mic. I'm sorry, I missed the whole thing because I had my sound off. What was the breaking news? What's the score?
It is one, nothing in penalty kicks, uh, uh, through the first shot. Uh, Carney scored on his first shot. The, the, they haven't, uh, shot. Oh, nope, sorry. Carney ju, uh, saved, uh, Muldarex. So it is one, one, one zero. I will keep, have your fun once it's up, so.
Wow, 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 this is amazing. I love this. It's like Sports Center and School Committee at the same time. I love it.
We're gonna lose viewers.
All right, so Gianna, did you want to go?
Thank you, Kevin. Thanks, Jamie. Um, I, so I have a couple of things, but I, I just wanted to, to focus on the integration for a moment. And Jean, and, and, you know, I'm looking up here, Jean's in here, but I know Jean, you're on the screen. In my school, you know, so it's one school building. We have pre K. Now granted, we only have two classrooms, uh, maybe with about fifty, fifty students, one full day classroom and one half day, half day. And our kids come in, like, I, I, I wanna ask, like, I feel like the preschoolers at Wolf Swamp come in later than the, the K to five. I feel like they leave earlier, like, like in my school. They have bathrooms in their classrooms. Um, and, um, my kids eat lunch in the classroom. My kids rarely have, um, like, rarely mix with our K to five. Um, and our buses are pre K, and I think that the Wolf Swamp buses are pre K only. Um, so I'm just trying to figure out, like, really how much they interact during the school day with the K to fives, because at my school, it's, it's very rare. And I also know that the, the spaces, like when we used to, you know, spray or clean in between classes being in there, I don't even think we're doing that anymore. Maybe that's something we go back to if preschool does become mask optional, but I, I just wanna kind of paint a clear picture for everybody. You know, I know the building's the same, but so is mine. Um, but our preschoolers are very rarely in contact with their K to fives.
So our preschool, um, the majority of our preschool students come to school by their parents. Um, they do arrive later. We do have one bus, um, for certain students with disabilities that need that to access school. Um, and they, they are on a different schedule, arrival and dismissal. So, um, the majority of our students come half day. So we have three morning sessions, three afternoon sessions, and then we have a small cohort of students that stay all day and access the A B A, the specialized, um, instruction in two additional classrooms. So there's five classrooms in the building, um, not including the, um, preschool speech room. When students are in preschool, they access music and art and computers. And, um, so those related arts, they go to within the, the greater community. So they have their own recess, so they're not necessarily inter, i- i- integrated with other students, just like you wouldn't have a first grader typically wouldn't be interacting with a third or a fourth grader at Wolf Swamp. The preschool classes are mixing. And they're just using their, when I'm saying they're integrated, they're integrated into the building, into the community as a whole. So when a preschooler is going to the nurse, they're going to the same nurse's office. If they're walking out to recess, they're going the same way. But they're pretty much, um, you know, self-contained classrooms, similar to a kindergarten. Some of our preschool, um, classrooms do have bathrooms and some do not. Um, so that, you know, there's integration there too. But when we, when I think of the word integrated, when we're talking about, um, integrating the program into the community at Wolf Swamp, I think it's important to remember that this is an integrated preschool, which means that fifty percent of the students in it have a disability. They're there to, um, you know, get their needs met. Some of these students do have significant medical needs. So unmasking everyone can certainly put some of these students at risk. Um, and I just, you know, wanna remember that, that those are. Um, and I just, you know, want to remember that, that those are students who, if they're, if other students are unmasked, these students with significant disabilities are not kids that can go to another community preschool. They need the specialized instruction of the special educators and the related services that are provided at Wolf Swamp preschool. Um, so I just, you know, I take that very, you know, seriously. It's a, it's a big commitment to to these kids with significant disabilities, and I just want to make sure that, that they're safe. So I just want to keep that in mind. This is, um, that's the purpose of the preschool is, and the peers come in as role models. So, and I hope that answered your question, Gianna.
Yeah, I just was, yes, and you did, and 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 you always do. And um, I think again, just for anybody that might be listening and and for myself, um, you know, I was trying to think of like, how much contact do the preschoolers come into with K to fives? Um, and you know, I get the building thing, but um, you know, the, the contact and and I do understand the whole, um, you know, services and 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 that point that you made. Um, I just wanted to paint a picture for people about the contact.
Bronwyn, go ahead.
Um, I just wanted to remind everyone that, um, it's, we're not mandating they remove their masks. We're just, um, seeing if we can, um, provide the option for the fifty percent that or whatever that turns out to be, would want to remove the mask. So this is not, um, like a full mask mandate removal. It just provides the parents with the choice for their young ones.
Jamie, do you have a score update or are we still waiting? We're still waiting. All right. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
I, I was just not going to give you an update. Update. Lost, lost four to one in PKs.
Oh.
Yeah.
Well, thank you for the update. Um, great season to our boys soccer team. Um, yeah, well done, well done. All right, Gianna, back to you.
Uh, I, I also just kind of wanted to, to, that's not really a question, but I, I, um, when we were back making the, the, talking about changing the mask policy, I, I thought it would be a little bit easier for people to get, um, a mask exemption from a pediatrician or a specialist or a therapist or, you know, some kind of medical professional working with that child. Um, and I've since learned, um, it's a little bit harder than I had thought when I was, you know, considering, um, the mask policy. Um, so again, I don't really have a question. It's more just like, uh, that's just another thing um, that I personally need to, to consider, um, you know, in, in thinking about this, this decision that's before us. Um, and, you know, I don't know if there's a way that we can, depending on how we go, you know, maybe resources to support parents and caregivers in, you know, in how they can explain the need for a mask exemption. Um, but I did just want to point out that was one of the, one of the things that led me to, um, my decision back when we were talking about masking. Um, so I just wanted to acknowledge that uh, from some of the people that I've heard from, it's a little more difficult than I had thought for people to get a mask exemption.
Thank you, Gianna. Mary, go ahead.
Now that our younger students are able to get vaccinated, so our five through eleven, I'm interested in looking at data about how many students are vaccinated at Wolf Swamp because that is a difference for me. When I think about the high school and I think about our eighty percent vaccination rate between staff and students, what is the vaccination rate if we're looking at Wolf Swamp as a whole? Because even though we have our preschool students who are not eligible for the vaccine, if we have the majority of students and staff in the building who are vaccinated, that to me is a little bit different than, um, not knowing what that vaccine rate is.
Marty, do we have any info on that?
Not this evening, no.
I think kids also timeframe wise may have gotten their first shot, but not that, you know, they haven't because it hasn't even been in effect that, that long. But thinking about, um, Bronwyn, a comment that you made a long time ago is what would change, uh, for that list? The, the vaccination rate of students and staff at, um, Wolf Swamp School will change, I predict, because I think kids are getting vaccinated.
Yeah, thank you, Mary. Other comments? Uh, Suzie, go ahead.
Um, yeah, I'm going to reiterate what Gianna said because I, I will be the first one to admit that that's, I, I assumed there would be more, um, flexibility provided to families from, uh, physicians around, uh, exemptions. And I'm, quite frankly, I'm surprised that there's only two exemptions, um, in the preschool. I think that's, um, I, I, I'm, I'm shocked actually that there's only two. Um, I, I expected it to be many more, uh, given that, you know, um, eh, as, as Jean illustrated, we have learners who are really in need of the special services that we provide around a number of, um, you know, areas of need and, um, yeah, I, I, I wrong, wrongly assumed, um, in the beginning that there was more flexibility, um, being provided to families, um, around the mask, the, you know, uh, recommendation from physicians for mask exemptions. Um, so I think that's, eh, and again, I, I share Bronwyn's concern. Um, and I think this committee has taken the approach that every mitigation strategy is temporary. Um, and we want to look at how we can continually address, um, you know, loos- loosening restrictions, um, making opportunities available for, you know, getting our children back to as normal of a situation as possible. I think the numbers indicate that there's a, a really good opportunity there. Um, especially given that it's integrated with the rest of the school. Um, I don't know if there's, if there are opportunities to, to consider that the, you know, perhaps the, if masks are removed only in the primary, you know, classroom, and they're not removed when they go to shared spaces like, uh, like arts, um, the relevant arts classes. I, I can't remember if that's the right terminology. Um, yeah, I'm just, I'm, again, just thinking about opportunities that we could, you know, implement to try and provide our youngest learners some flexibility, um, with this, with this approach.
Thank you, Suzie. Let's go to Bronwyn next.
And just a follow up on what Suzie said. I mean, i- is it possible to have the students mask when they're in shared spaces? I mean, I, I don't think that that's necessary because they're not actually in the shared space with any other students from Wolf Swamp, but if that would make people feel more comfortable, um, I guess wearing a, if they're already be wearing a bu- a mask on the bus, uh, if they wear a mask, I guess, outside of their, their classroom, where a fifth grade class might be coming in after them. Again, I, I don't, I don't think it's necessary, but it might be a good compromise where we, we can, uh, people don't have to worry as much about, um, K to five at Wolf Swamp because, um, the pre-kers would be wearing masks outside of their classroom, which I think that's a, something to consider. That was a good point, Suzie. Thank you.
Yeah, I, I, I'm going to jump in before we go to Gianna because Marty, I'm hoping you can address one thing that I, that I, I feel like we've talked about before, but I know I'm a little fuzzy on. So I think one of the things that I've heard is that if we go mask optional in the pre-K, there are a couple of kids who are in the process of being vaccinated because they're five, a couple. But most of the kids, overall, the majority of the kids are unvaccinated. So the, the quarantining protocols become very different for them if they're unmasked and unvaccinated. And and Marty, if you could just walk us through that because I want to make sure we're understanding what we're doing. Because I think one of the things we've always focused on and you, you've had us focus on is want to maximize the time the kids are in school. And and I think we're all nervous that if we change something and then a bunch of these kids get knocked out, uh, we, I just want to make sure we understand what we're deciding on. If we let unvaccinated kids go unmasked and what that could do if there is a case in the room.
Sure. Uh, so tell me if this doesn't answer your question, but so currently if, um, if a child is masked and is beyond three feet, uh, they are not, they wouldn't be subject to testing and quarantining. So conversely, if there were a child that was unmasked, who was exposed to a positive case, a positive student, that student would, uh, if they were inside of six feet, they would be considered to be close contact, subject to test and quarantine. So we would have to, uh, if, if the parents consented, we would put that child through the, the test and stay program. Um, and so it would, um, you know, not, uh, our experience has been that when we've seen cases at Blueberry and Center in particular, many parents have simply opted to keep their children home rather than going ahead with the test and stay program and rather than having their child in a classroom that maybe they feel uneasy about. So, you know, so that, that uh, test and stay has been great to keep a lot of children in school. And if our preschool families avail themselves of it, it would be, it would be great. I'm not, I'm not sure if they would avail themselves of test and stay in the same way that, um, children in older grades do. So certainly it, unmasked children are much more subject to have to test in quarantine.
Thank you, Marty. And and is there any impact on the, any of that if you are, if you're vaccinated versus being unvaccinated?
Yeah, thank you. So if you are vaccinated, that makes you exempt from having to, uh, test and or quarantine.
Even if you're unmasked?
Even if you're unmasked.
Wait, what? Can you repeat that, Marty?
Okay, tha- thank you for that clarification. That's very helpful.
That if vaccinated individuals are exempt from having to test and stay or quarantine.
Thank you. Uh, Gianna, I know that you had your hand raised. Thank you for letting me jump in there.
Thank you, Kevin. I, um, similar to what I was asking about the high school in terms of timing. Um, and, you know, Bronwyn used the word compromise and and it just reminded me of something I wanted to, um, share. I, um, if a motion were to be put forward tonight and if we were to, um, have mask optional, um, I would just really want us to consider, um, the start time of January fourth or third. Um, and I know I heard, you know, all the reasons why people, you know, want to get this done right away. Um, but in this case, uh, different from the high school, in this case, people who, um, for medical reasons, personal reasons, professional opinions, uh, whatever reason, if they did choose to look for a preschool elsewhere, a very long and involved process. You have to research places. You have to see who has availability. You have to see who is still masking. Um, it's a, it's a, it's a long, challenging process that would add great, uh, stress to, uh, some of those families or all of those families. Um, so I just want that to be one of the considerations. Again, the timing of waiting for, who knows how many students at Wolf Swamp will get, um, vaccinated by January fourth. Um, but at least gives us a couple of weeks. I think that's a fair compromise if we do choose to go with the mask optional. I think also, um, there is going to have to be consideration of, is it going to be six feet? Is it going to be three feet? Um, and the six feet, and Jean, forgive me if I'm using the wrong language, but you know, it's hard to do parallel play and collaborative play and cooperative play at six feet, um, or center times. So I think, you know, again, in thinking of a compromise, we need to give the teachers and the staff time to consider, you know, if it is six feet, how are they going to, you know, accommodate those, those types of play situations? Um, especially the peer to, you know, the, the peer to peer, the peer to, you know, um, the different students. Um, I also think, you know, the holidays are coming up. I mentioned this with the high school. I just want to reiterate it because, um, in this case, you know, I would be looking for a compromise in terms of the timing because I don't think it's fair to everybody if we go with mask optional and don't give people, um, particularly families who need time to, to really adjust and make a significant change. Um, so that is my, that's, thank you.
Can I speak to the six feet? Just, thanks. Um, so the staff has made it pretty clear that they felt like if masks were removed and students had to go back to a six foot difference, that would, uh, distance in groups and play and all of that, that would be, um, very detrimental to their learning. Um, and so that would be a huge step backwards if we have to go back to this, the six foot distance in preschool. That was extremely challenging. Um, it, it's very difficult to manage to try to keep kids away from one another. Um, so that, that would be, um, would, would be a very challenging circumstance to have to go back to that, um, to the six foot. And I do, um, I know someone had mentioned having the masks, um, in certain spaces in Wolf Swamp. I do think from a teacher perspective and staff perspective, that would be really difficult to manage. Um, these are kids that are independent. They're not going to have a mask in their pocket. They, where are they going to store it when they take it off? Um, I think that would be challenging as well.
Thank you, Jean. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Thank you, Kevin. I just wanted to, to follow up like, and thanks, Jean. Um, Superintendent, did you say i- if we were to go mask optional for preschool, did you say it would have to be six feet or is that something we also consider?
Yeah, I, it would not have to be six feet. I think that would, I would, uh, probably seek your direction on that. Uh, but to me, the dis- the s- a six foot distance standard is more educationally detrimental than the mask. Frankly, you know, I think it's, eh, to have children not have that opportunity to be involved in cooperative play because we're trying to keep them six feet apart. That's, that's something that would be really, you know, educationally detrimental, as Jean said.
Yeah, thank you, Superintendent. And, you know, that's where, again, where, you know, where I'm, I'm struggling to find that balance because I know of the other detrimental effects of masks on preschool. And we've all talked about this. And and again, I, you know, I'm trying to teach facial expressions and emotions every day. It's what I do, and I'm doing it with a mask on. So, um, yeah, so thank you for that explanation about the six feet.
Um, let's do Bronwyn and then Nicole.
Um, Marty, I just had a quick question. I wanted to, uh, clarify. So if, if we have a student that's vaccinated and masked, even if they're considered a close contact, they do not enter the test and stay protocol?
So there's the, the definition of a close contact hasn't changed since last year. So the definition of a close contact is, uh, you're inside of six feet for fifteen minutes or more over twenty-four hours. uh, you're inside of six feet for fifteen minutes or more over a twenty-four hour period. So that that has not changed. What has changed is certain people are exempt from having to test and or quarantine. Uh, and and so the individuals that are exempt are the are vaccinated individuals, or if you are masked and outside of three feet. So those, if you if you are vaccinated or if you are, you have a mask on and you're more than three feet from the positive case, you are exempt from having to test and quarantine, even though technically you're a close contact. Does that make sense? Cuz I I hope I'm answering your question.
Um, I I just don't recall that from the, from the beginning of the year when we we went over it. Um, but I could just be uh, confused about um, other schools. I thought that it was you had to do it if you were um, considered a close contact no matter what, but.
I think practically speaking, um, close contacts, everyone understands close contacts as someone that is inside of three feet. But technically, the definition of a, if you're really, the the DESI guidelines would say that the definition of a close contact hasn't changed, but what has changed is the individuals that have to quarantine or test and stay as a result, so.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thanks.
Yeah.
Cool, go ahead.
Thank you for clarifying, Marty. Appreciate it. Um, I wanted to circle back to something that um, Gina had mentioned earlier related to um, students who have more significant medical needs. And just to, again, put out the idea that we have a responsibility to ensure safe and equal access to education for all of our students. And that our preschool, for some students, this might not be as simple as needing time to wrap their mind around change or needing time to make plans for another change. If a student has a significant medical issue, they might be at a high enough risk for COVID that this might be a factor that means they're not able to participate in the program moving forward. So I have a brother who has significant special needs. Um, he's an adult now. But when he was younger, in this situation, he would not have been able to continue attending if there was not universal mask. We know that masking both parties is the way to reduce transmission. And we have a responsibility to make sure that all of our students can access that educational opportunity.
Thank you, Nicole. Uh, Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Kevin. Thanks, Nicole. Um, and and I I definitely understand and 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 get that um, you know, access for those students um, with medical uh, needs. Um, but we have heard from parents who uh, their children require services that are best met um, without masks. So again, here we are. We we're trying to find that balance of, you know, we know we have students that need to have masks on to be in school to access their services. And we know that we have students who better access their services without masks. So um, so I appreciate your input, Nicole, um, but I just wanted to to share the voice of those other students again.
So we do have a possible motion. And if no one moves it, then we're moving on.
I move the, that the school committee approved the revised policy E B C F A face masks to exclude pre K students from wearing face masks while in their instructional spaces and classrooms. Also with the legal opinion of running from the lawyers.
Do we, uh, we have a second? Okay, so we have the motion and it has been seconded. Do we have additional discussion? Gianna.
I would love, I don't know if it's an amendment to the motion, or if it's just something we have Superintendent consider, but um, again, in seeking a fair compromise, I don't think that we should do this unless it's with a January third or January fourth. Um, and I'll speak for myself, uh, January third or January fourth start date.
So, Gianna, I I I take your point. I think my thinking on this is, I think we should see if this motion passes. And if it passes, then I think we need to figure out when we're gonna implement it. Cuz if it doesn't pass, then I don't think we need to worry about when it is implemented. Um, does, Marty, does that make sense from your perspective?
It does. If if it does pass, we we certainly would want uh, an implementation date. Um, it couldn't be, couldn't be tomorrow. I probably would just, if it does pass, I'd just ask you to give us some time to orient families to this and and to get our ducks in a row before we put it in place. Um, so we, it would be helpful if it does pass to have a a second motion considered for an implementation date.
Suzy, go ahead.
Um, so I guess I would just challenge that notion because perhaps the date will cause the motion to be voted on, uh, to be approved versus not. So I guess that's what I'm wondering. Um, that's why I would argue that if there was an amendment to be made to add a a a date of implementation that, you know, I don't know. That's that's my opinion.
That's fair. So I I would accept uh, Gianna's um, Gianna's uh, offer as a as a friendly amendment, um, and then we can vote on the amendment. So Gianna, you're proposing a date of January th- third, fourth?
January third is the Monday, I believe. Are we back then soon? So, you know, do we wanna start something this major, the Monday we come back from holiday, or do we wanna do it on January fourth, Tuesday?
Um, Marty, do you wanna weigh in on that?
Well, I guess I'd go back to our original recommendation, which was to maintain masking uh, for now, in that you'll have an opportunity on, at your November thirtieth meeting, and you'd have an opportunity at your December fourteenth meeting to see if any of the the bullets, to use Bronwyn's, the way Bronwyn framed it nicely, have any of those bullets changed? Have we moved the needle on any of those indicators to make it so that we could, you know, uh, get behind this? Um, so I'd say, you know, I'm not sure. I guess I would say I'd I'd rather sort of reconsider it at future meetings on the thirtieth or the fourteenth, just to see where things stand and to see if we're ready to uh, move forward with it.
So I I take your point, but let me, I'm gonna push you a little bit on this, Marty, cuz we need a date. So if Gianna is proposing we do this in January,
Yeah.
which January date would you prefer? Gianna offered up two, the third or the fourth?
I might, I might push it out. If if you're looking for an early January date, if that's the intention of the committee, I might push it out even to the Wednesday, the fifth. Or even Thursday, the sixth, so as to allow, if you did, let's say Thursday, the sixth, you'd have five days from that, any weekend transmission potentially. You know, if people are traveling over that New Year's Eve holiday, you'd have some time to see how it's playing out. So if you're, if you're asking me for a date that would, if you want an early January date, and I know some of you probably wanna do it much sooner than that, but if you wanted an early January date, I might recommend January sixth.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Uh, Gianna.
Thanks for that, Superintendent. I'm wondering, um, so if if we're thinking like January sixth, do we, do we then just wait until January uh, seventeen, after DESI's supposed to come out with, and and I'm not saying, I'm not even gonna try and speculate what DESI's gonna do, but I'm just saying, we would be ahead of the game in terms of DESI coming out and, you know, saying, stay the same, or, you know, maskless for everybody. Um, but if we're gonna wait till January sixth, do we just wait until January, I think fifteenth is a Saturday for some reason. Um, we just wait.
I I I don't wanna be presumptuous cuz I know there's members in the committee that would like to see it happen or earlier than January third, fourth, fifth, or sixth. So I I um, it it's a, you know, that that's another option, is to wait until, to see what DESI does too. And so I suppose all of these options are, but the timing of this is is on the table for your consideration.
Uh, let's do Bronwyn and then Jamie.
Oh, Jamie can go ahead. Thanks.
Right, Jamie, you're up.
Yep, uh, J- I I like Gianna's idea of the fifth or sixth. I wouldn't wait on DESI as some governing body that may or may not come, and we were, we're gonna be subject to other rules of getting to eighty percent, all sorts of things with regards to that school. I think the fifth or sixth makes a lot of sense, Gianna. So, in my opinion.
Thank you, Jamie.
Second, if we need a second to that, I-
Well, we don't, we don't have yet, uh, an amendment. So, let let's hear from Bronwyn and then we can see if we wanna amend the motion. Bronwyn, go ahead.
Oh, I was under the impression that uh, Gianna did, was amending it?
Uh, if Bronwyn, i- if Gianna wants to make that amendment, then we'll talk about that amendment. We'll vote on the amendment.
Oh, I just thought she did.
I I did not hear an official amendment. So Gianna, do you wanna make an official amendment?
Sorry, everybody. I I I think when I used the word amendment, I was asking if I could make one. So I will, um, I'd like to offer an amendment to the motion that Bronwyn put forward. Um, that if if the motion passes, no, 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 yeah. Thursday, January sixth.
Okay, so Gianna is saying-
Twenty twenty-two.
Thursday, January sixth, twenty twenty-two, is added to the motion as the amendment. So what I want us to do now is speak to the amendment, and then we can vote on the, wait, hold on. Diane, go ahead, Diane. Um, I I, Jamie preemptively seconded, but I apologize. Jamie, you need to say it.
I will second that.
Thank you, Jamie. Thank you, Diane. Um, look, we need to speak to the amendment, and then if we vote on it, it will then become part of the motion. So does anybody wanna speak to the amendment? Uh, Mary and then Gianna.
To Bronwyn's point from a long time ago in the meeting with the bullets, what will have changed by then? I I'm still feeling like we have a vulnerable population. We don't have staff to support. We won't, I mean, I don't know what the vaccination rate of the rest of the school building will be. Like, what, why is it, why wouldn't we just do it? And like, what's, why? Why, why are we changing the date? I don't, I don't know how to make a vote about the thing where I feel like there's a lot more information I would need. We have a lot of time between now and now. What, what else are we getting by putting it off or not putting it off?
Giving people time if they wanna change preschools, I think that is actually quite compelling. Uh, remembering back to the challenges of finding a preschool, giving people lead time, I think is potentially very, very helpful. Um, Gianna.
Yeah, and and Mary, thanks for asking that. When I raised my hand at the same time you did, um, I was thinking, you know, just to make the comment that still between now and January sixth, if some information were to come forward, we could revisit, and then it might not be January sixth, and it might be, you know, February first. Like, we still have the opportunity. Is that correct, Superintendent?
I'm not seeing any more comments on this. So I think we're going to now vote on the amendment. So this would just put a date of January sixth on the original motion. Any questions before we vote? All right, we're gonna vote on the amendment. Mary.
No.
Gianna.
Yes.
Nicole.
No.
Jamie.
Yes.
Suzy.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
And yes from me. So the, I guess Diane's saying something?
Yeah, I didn't hear any of those votes, so you'll have to re, tell me what they were.
All right, so let's do that again. Mary.
No.
Gianna.
Yes.
Nicole.
No.
Jamie.
Yes.
Suzy.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
And yes from me. Diane, are we okay? All right, so that has now become part of the motion. So our motion to modify the mask policy for the pre K students is now to happen on January sixth as the im- mation, i- implementation date. We have not voted on that motion, but we just amended it. Uh, does anybody wanna speak to the amended motion before we vote on the amended motion? All right, then we're gonna vote on this one. And I won't make Mary go first again. Uh, Ni- Nicole.
No.
Gianna.
Yes.
Mary.
No.
Suzy.
Yes.
Jamie.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
And yes from me. So that passes five to two. Um, and and I will also reiterate what we said previously, which is if conditions change, we can revisit this. Um, so thank you again for some excellent discussion, and and I think we have given Marty and everybody involved's time to work on this and and figure out how to implement this uh, come January sixth. Um, Bronwyn, go ahead.
I just have one follow-up question. Um,
Sure, yeah.
Marty, are the preschool students, are they um, are they offered the clear masks? Let's ju- let's just say from now to January sixth or whatever, if someone's said, you know, they wanted a a clear mask, um, is that something we could offer?
I defer to Jean on that one, if that's okay.
Yes, uh, they they have had access to clear masks for the last year plus.
Okay, great.
September, both staff and students, and and most of them use them in the um, speech therapy where you need to see them now. But yes, we have plenty of those available and have.
Awesome. Thank you.
All right, um, I know we have one more item that Marty wants to cover.
Think this might be informational, but there might be some questions. Uh, we as part of sort of moving along that continuum and trying to be uh, less restrictive when we safely can, uh, I, this has come up in some previous meetings, and I wanted to um, let the committee know that we feel like we're in a position to restore stools to many of the cafeteria tables. So if you've, if you've been in the high school, these are oval-shaped tables that have twelve seats, I believe, around each table, and there's a a little circular stool that the students sit on, and we had to promote distancing, we had actually pulled the- We had actually pulled the, the stools off um the cafeteria tables. We have some cold weather coming up. We have confirmed high levels of vaccination and we haven't seen. Uh, you know, high levels of transmission at that, in that age group, that older adolescent group. So we feel like we can uh allow eight to a table instead of five. It's within DPH guidelines and we would still wanna retain seating options for children who want more distance. So, again, we think it's a, you know, it's reasonable, it's safe, it's prudent that we can. Uh, it's gonna create, still, there'll still be space that, that the students won't be as packed around the cafeteria tables. As they were pre-pandemic. Uh, but it's a step in the right direction to sort of restore. Uh, a greater level of normalcy to the cafeteria, but also allowing seating options for students who want or need the distance for some reason. If you have any questions, happy to answer, uh, or if there's any additional information you need, uh, it might be something I'll have to bring back. To you at your next meeting. Our hope was to implement that. Um, I was thinking December first. But it, realistically, it's probably going to be the Monday following that. It might be December sixth. It, it's a fairly labor intensive project to uh get the stools and to um put them, reinstall them. On all the cafeteria tables. So it might be a weekend project for our custodians, so. So questions, if you have any, happy to answer.
Thank you, Marty. Gianna, go ahead.
Thanks, Superintendent. I, um, so I'm wondering now that we. You know, if, if all goes according to the vote tonight and, and the plan. And mask optional starts on December first. Will that then now change this if we're talking about unmasked students sitting next to? Well, I guess they're, none of them are wearing their mask during lunch, so. And that hasn't been six feet for a while?
They've been inside of six feet at lunch because we, we simply, six feet would be desirable at lunch, but we simply. Couldn't pull it off at the high school with the number of kids who are trying to get through the lunchroom. So they're, they've been inside of six feet. This will bring some students more closely together.
And they still wouldn't have been wearing masks anyway, so, okay. Thanks, Superintendent.
Any additional comments or questions? All right. Thank you, Marty. Um, we have no new business. And we have a possible motion for an executive session.
I move that the school committee meeting executive session pursuant to Mass General Law Chapter thirty A, Section twenty-one. A purpose to conduct a strategy session in preparation with collective bargaining with units A, C, and D. And purpose seven, consideration of the lead to executive session minutes of previous meetings, to not reconvene into open session.
Can we have a second?
Second.
We have any discussion? All right, we will move to a vote. Mary.
Yes.
Gianna.
Yes.
Nicole.
Yes.
Uh, Jamie.
Yes.
Suzie.
Yes.
Bronwyn.
Yes.
And yes from me. Thank you to everyone for coming out tonight. Thank you for, uh, I think, a really excellent meeting. Um, and we will be back at it after Thanksgiving. We wish everybody a happy Thanksgiving. Uh, and we will see you on November thirtieth. Uh, thanks to everybody. Have a great night.